Yes, I'm here.
You want to go? It's about time?
It's time.
Sure.
You want to run the meeting?
You can. I think that'd be more efficient.
Okay, well, either way, it doesn't matter. Okay, well, let's call the meeting then to order and let's all say the pledge allegiance, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I just talked to Dawn here while you were gone a little bit. I was trying to remember what we decided last week, Alexis, on what we should pursue first. Was we just going to go over the accounts payable and receivable and payroll first?
She did send us an agenda. I don't remember that it had that on it specifically, did it?
No.
No, I just left the first half hour empty to do whatever business you wanted to do.
Okay, well, yeah, let's start there. I did have some questions on the payroll, so we can start with that.
Okay, we'll do the payroll here and the accounts payable.
First note would be the topic of department heads turning in their information for transfers and they needed their estimated accounts payable that they don't have bills for. And there's nothing on that, correct, Dawn?
No, I did not receive anything from any of the departments. Did you hear me?
Yes, I heard you.
Okay.
Is that something we've had trouble with every year or?
We do have two new department heads, but I spoke to both of them multiple times. I don't think that I should have to keep repeating myself to provide it. The other two departments that normally have transfers is not just we and Health Department, and they used to contact me and they stopped contacting me a couple of years ago, and I continue to do their transfers. I did do the fire districts I normally do because they don't know where they're at, so I do that for them at their request. I did do the special building where I felt like it should be at. So the resolutions that I sent you guys and that I'll give you guys too. Jim already has his. The first four resolutions. I don't know what I did. I probably attached them with something else. It's okay. Rainey, you can look at those.
Yeah, I did online, ready.
And I emailed him. So the first four resolutions, one's the transportation bus fund. That would be the remaining distribution of the 20,000. Normally, we do that in September, but he hasn't really needed the money, so... But he will need the money to make payroll and accounts payable. I did the fire districts, the special equipment fund, or sorry, the capital improvement fund from County General. And of course, you can't really do those resolutions until after you approve the amended budgets because some of them are affected by that. I did do a Health Department estimated one, but I really have no idea. It's a lot more than what it has been in years past, so I don't know what you guys want to do. All of these transfers, except for the Fire Department and the transportation bus, is kind of up to you. Otherwise, the Fire Departments, we try to transfer as much money as possible so that they can build up their special equipment funds to purchase new equipment.
But you're saying the other departments could be transferred into the capital improvement for the entire County General?
Just the County General, yes. So that one, I feel pretty confident with. Or you can leave it in County General and reduce the tax levy for the next year. I was just thinking of the projects that you have. We know that we need to do something on the courthouse. I don't know what those expenses will cost. So if we put it in the capital improvement fund, you have the money already sitting there. Because technically, you only levy $20,000 for special building expenses throughout the year, so that $20,000 would be gone very quickly.
So do you have an estimate for the totals of those departments combined?
For the County General?
Right.
Or... Yes, if you give me one second, I'll open that.
Okay.
It's basically going to look like that little snippet that I emailed to you guys out. It's just an Excel spreadsheet. So County General, we combine everybody, so everything that's in Fund 10 gets smushed together. And I have that we would have an ending cash carryover of $216,251, and that is already adjusted by the required amount. And an amount of remaining budget of $213,895 across all of the funds in the County General. And that is with the $100,000 amended budget. If you do not amend the budget, then that number goes down. And then I show that last year, we had $31,404 in prior year expense. We really don't know what some of those bills are. Some of them are utility bills. I can tell you that we were not able to get Kansas gas service bill, so that will be kind of heftier because it is winter time. Hannah called today, and they apparently have changed us to a... They have changed all of their mass accounts, or what they call master accounts, to a different billing period. And so we are probably going to have to move that bill to start paying it mid-month because they're not going to cut off till the 28th, and we should receive a bill. Or basically, not the 28th, they're going to cut off on the 31st. But she said in January, they are supposed to cut off on the 28th, but that's not enough time for us to get our bills in. So that's the only major expense that we have that I know of. Sheriff's Department hasn't been billed for fuel for three months, so that's going to be a major expense that's going to come in, I'm assuming. Other than that, most of the departments are smaller.
In your email, it says I'll do a little more research to make sure that it isn't a max of 25% accumulated amongst all the funds?
Okay, that is for...
Did you do that?
No, I have not. I'm going to do that while you guys are meeting today.
Okay.
That is just for the road and bridge part, so...
Oh, okay. Okay, that's why you have the $610,000 number.
Yes. So that one is limited. I think you can do 25% of your budget transferred to each of those special, but I want to make sure it's not a combined. But regardless, unless you guys are thinking that I'm underestimating or overestimating, I'm thinking around $575,000 to be safe, but I have no idea because nothing was provided to me.
Okay. I can see half the room. Is Mr. McKay there on the other side?
Yep, I'm here.
Do you happen to have those end-of-year numbers for us now?
No, I thought we talked about that our last meeting where we were going to put portion into special road because they did chip seal this year, and the rest we put into our... We couldn't put in special bridge, but it would be a special equipment fund.
I know, but we need to know what the rest means as far as numbers.
I did not have that number. I thought that was what we discussed last week, so I was... My mistake for not having that.
Okay.
So I guess we'll just go ahead and review the accounts payable and payroll?
Okay, so my first question on the payroll then, let's go to that. There were two checks for the treasurer, one with her regular pay listed under her department, and that was for $3,484. And then at the very end, there's another check to the treasurer for $5,520?
Correct. So the state of Kansas has, because she does motor vehicles, that the treasurer's office, the treasurer can take X amount of dollars, and I can go and pull that. But I want to say it's like a dollar and 10 cents per transaction gets paid to the treasurer for managing that service. And then after so many, then it's like spins back. So if... And I'm just going to throw random numbers out, but say after 2,000 transactions, then it's a little bit less, and after so many more transactions. And so she does that every single year, and I think probably almost all of the treasurers across the state of Kansas do that.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize that's what that meant. So it's basically like a bonus check based on how many motor vehicle transactions there were?
Correct.
Yeah, that's in the Kansas Association.
So it almost... At 5,500, that's almost 500 a month?
Yes. You know, and I did talk to her about, you know, would she want to maybe try to do that monthly, but the previous treasurer always did it once per year, and I feel like she thinks that's the way that she needs to do that, is the once per year. But she could even do it quarterly if she wanted to.
I guess my only comment on it is we need to be aware of that when we talk about pay rates for positions, because we have almost all of the elected officials have given themselves raises after we hired the new department head for the highway department. And so everybody bumped themselves up to that $60,000 a year mark from wherever they were. And so just thinking in the future, I shouldn't say everyone, I don't believe the register of deeds did.
No, she did not. And the treasurer didn't either, and she said partly because she just didn't have the budget in the County General to do so. Now...
Well, I guess that's what I'm making... I'm just making sure I point that out for the commission, that, you know, thinking about the pay rate there is actually, you know, almost, let's say, $450 a month more by the end of the year than what it looked like monthly on that particular paycheck for that position. And I did do a little bit of research into that. Elected officials have the authority to extend their budget as they see fit, so when they give themselves raises, they can do that as it was done. However, if we do formulate this pay scale, the elected officials have to stick to the pay scale. So when we create the pay scale, we create a dollar amount for a paycheck for each elected official, they can't necessarily raise that themselves without approval of the commission. So I wanted the commission to be aware of that.
So this $5,520, now that doesn't come out of our budget. That's part of... That's like a bonus from the state to her?
It comes out of that Fund 180, her special motor vehicle fund.
Oh, okay.
And each year, she pretty much puts money back into County General, normally around the $20,000 mark. Now, some counties fund the treasurer's office, like they'll have separate staff. So Celine County has that satellite office. They will take all of that money out of the special equipment fund, or out of that special motor vehicle fund, and fund their staff that staffs that and the office expense. But...
But in other words, it's not being levied, but it's a portion of everybody's payment when they pay their motor vehicle tax?
Now, ever since I have been here, they've never offset wages by that. But apparently, prior to that, when Donna West was the treasurer, they did offset employees' wages by that. So they would give them like 25 cents an hour out of that fund. But they've never done that since I've been an employee. But it is... It can be done, and it is appropriate if that's what you guys so choose to do. You just wouldn't have the transfer that comes into the County General at the end of the year.
Well, you could think of it as how you're justifying your office staff. I mean, if it takes one office staff X amount of hours per week to perform the functions of the motor vehicle, and at the end of the year, you've actually collected a dollar something per transaction, and it turns out to be $5,000, that's technically, you know, $400 and some dollars you're spending on that particular function in that office. So it's an internal reimbursement, I guess. But it's going directly to the treasurer, not necessarily to the one person in the office who performs that function, because I assume they all do.
Well, that particular dollar amount, I believe, is in the state statute exactly what they will pay and how they will pay it. And that is set to go to the treasurer. Now, could she decline it? Yes, she probably could. But then the remaining amount of the fees that are collected is to help offset the costs to the county to take care of the transactions of the motor vehicle office. So, I mean, it could be used to pay for equipment. It could be used to pay for salaries if that's what you so desired.
The other question I had, I forget. What does S-Pay stand for?
S-Pay? Sick. That would be the extended illness. So our system only has vacation or sick time. So anybody that's on leave is a V. Anybody that's on extended illness is an S for sick.
Okay.
Because we didn't pay to do the special programming to get that to change.
Okay. But it's still part of their PTO?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the time that they have to be off three full days or 24 hours before they can start using that time.
Okay. And then I noticed that we had quite a few extra payments out of EMS, and I assume a lot of that is back pay to some of the volunteers for time that they put in. And how far back is that going? Is that just one month worth?
I think that's just 2018. That would be the standby. I tried to notate it. Let me see what prints out on you guys. Okay, it didn't come out. It's on their paycheck stubs, but if it was... I tried to put it in as a separate pay, so if...
Yeah, I see several checks per person.
Okay, so if it's $30, that is the standby for a football game. $60 is a wrestling match. He did go back for 2018 for that. And then I believe there was two runs that he gave me time for 2018. Nothing for 2017. And he gave me some runs for 2019 that hadn't been paid.
Okay, so you're saying we still need to go back into 2017 and do that entire year?
Well, let me... It's an auxiliary fact, but Mr. Shirley called me today, and he'd received a bill for an ambulance run in 2017. And he took it up with the Health Department, and they informed him that they couldn't recreate those records, and they would just write that off for him. I don't know if that's going to be the case in every case or what. It's too late to fire him with your cleanup insurance company, and that's why they rid his off, because they couldn't file anymore.
Well, we discussed this last week.
I think that's two separate things.
Yeah.
That's patient side. She's asking about employee side.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can go back to that, the ambulance billing. I guess I was just talking about the payroll portion of it. So we're almost caught up, but Dawn, are you saying we still have to do 2017?
You guys had told him to do 2017 and 2018.
Yeah.
He did 2018. I don't know about 2017.
Okay. Okay. And are we caught up in 19?
As far as I know.
God bless you. I think those are all the questions I had. These other separate pays out of personal services, those are for the fire departments?
The ones that would be towards the bottom?
Uh-huh.
Yes. So Fund 90, 91, 93, 95, 90, 91, and 92, those are the fire department guys. And I don't know what they pay them for. Some of them, it's maintenance on their equipment. Some of them is for doing the secretarial work and the reporting to the state.
Okay.
But most of them get paid quarterly, except for Mr. Crafty and Sylvan, and he gets paid his monthly.
Okay, I noticed that. Okay, that's... I don't have any other questions. Everything looks fine to me.
Would you like a motion?
Yeah, we would entertain a motion to approve the payroll.
I move that we approve the payroll for 1102 dated 19... I'm sorry, 29 December 2019.
Yeah, the amount is...
And the amount is... I'm amounting here. $219,159.28. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the payroll for 11... What date here?
It's for 12/31.
For 12/31, yeah.
End of the month, yeah.
19. We have all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried, no opposed. Now we look at accounts payable here. I had a couple of questions on accounts payable here. Dawn, but you probably...
I have invoices, so you ask away.
No, I'm not questioning those. I just maybe don't know what some things are.
That's okay. I don't either, so we'll learn together.
If I can find out. I looked at it before and had a question. Well, you have that one telephone or something services, and it was like for...
Oh, several thousand, the phone connection?
Yeah.
That is the new phone system. So once we went to Eagle, of course, we had to upgrade our telephone system here in the courthouse and the Health Department. So part of that is out of the Health Department's fund, and the other part is here in the courthouse to update the equipment.
It's called the phone connection, huh?
Yes.
And that was sort of $16,800. Okay, I know we approved that. I just didn't know that was the name of what we were paying. Okay.
And eventually, it will pay off that by the same amount of the telephone.
Okay.
Which we're probably at a third of the cost that we were paying before, so...
I was curious as to why at Western Cooperative, we had a couple of wrong payments. Was that clerical errors on somebody's part? You know, they were paid off, and I just wondered three times.
And Brendan, I got a kind of question for you, and I think you answered this before. You buy quite a few tires from that Pomp's Tire Service. Where is that, Selena?
Selena's...
Or they... You like the best place to go, you think, or... Yeah, I notice you just get a lot of business to them. That's fine.
Probably not worth the trouble. I just out of curiosity.
Ordering from them.
Oh, yeah, those rings.
She dropped it was cheaper than here.
Right, okay.
And then they service our heavy equipment tires and greater tires. The dealers put them in the area, and they're a national company. They used to be across Midwest, and they got bought out by Pomp's, which is the national distributor of tires.
Okay, so what is showing is that on Western Cooperative, she picked up and paid the total charges due and not the current charges due.
Okay.
So our bills cross in the mail. And so when she picked up the total charges due, then she also picked up what she paid in October. Or it says in September for October.
I was just curious. I just saw something unusual.
Oh, and I have one. Well, maybe a question to you, Brendan, about Kansas Department of Transportation. I see we paid for road safety plan, $5,150.
That was the local road safety plan that we talked about, WACATRA. We're in the second round of it. So the Hyrus Road Program going forward, this next letting of it, anyone can apply for it. Following year, if you've not done a local road safety plan, you're not eligible for those funds to apply for them.
Oh, okay, that's you told us about that.
So it's something... There's already been one stage of counties in the state of Kansas. We're in stage two. We got selected for that. And with cost sharing, they're paying... We pay $5,000, they pay $...
$45,000. So it's a 90-10 split.
Right, you explained it before. Thanks again. I've kind of forgotten, but now you've brought it back to my memory. You know, you've got to kind of pay this to get into the grand policy.
Yeah, so they're going to develop a local road safety plan. So there's been some conference call that Brendan has been on.
Once a month.
Once a month, give an update. So they're going to identify like 10 safety projects around the county, and then you can apply into the Hyrus Road Program with one of those projects. So some of them might be signage or siding, or who knows what they are going to identify. And then that's a 90-10 split. So we use the Hyrus Road Program and apply for those safety projects, and then it's the state pays 90, and the county pays 10. So it's kind of an investment.
Right, yeah, you explained it before a month ago.
Except for the signing, if the signing is paid at 100%, by the state, if they decide to elect for signing, which they've done for major collectors last year or two years ago.
Right, yeah.
That's paid at 100% by the state, zero by the county.
Oh, good, then that's probably worth it, huh?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have no more problems.
I don't have any more issues either. Those are the only ones. Alexis, do you have any?
I have a question.
Okay.
Dawn, I noticed first bank card, number one, email renewal, domain renewal, and domain renewal total for $324.44. Is that a yearly bill?
That is an every two years, and one of them is for the email registrations, and one of them is the domain. The domain is for two years, and Dawn accidentally clicked the button twice, so we now have a domain for at least four years. So I apologize for that. I tried to undo it, but apparently I can't undo it.
Okay, and actually, I was just going to point out, if that is yearly, which you're saying it's bi-yearly, are we paying any other services for our website, or is that in its entirety?
That is just the Google email address, or the... It's not Google, sorry. The GoDaddy. It's kind of like Gmail, but it's GoDaddy. It's for the LincolnCOKS.org part. Now...
Okay, but that's not affiliated with Thompson Reuters to run our website?
No. Now, I got that bill, and we pay that once a year, so we kind of look back to see what year and what budget did we pay it out of. So we won't pay that until January, but I want to say that bill is like $1,500.
That's what I was wondering what the cost is.
And that includes the domain for LincolnCOKS.com. So the website is a little bit different than the emails.
I gotcha, okay.
I move we approve the accounts payable for 30 December this year in the amount of $430,000... I'm sorry, $430,047.21.
We have a motion to approve AP invoices, accounts payable invoices for 12/30/19, and I'll second that. Any discussion, Alexis?
Yeah, I had a few more. And noticed two autopsies. Are those separate, or was that all for one?
No, it's two separate people. And a lot of times, they're behind time, so any unattended death, we're responsible for. But we may get the bill, like we may get the funeral home bill, sorry, Jim, but we may get the funeral home bill for mileage to transport them to a month and a half before we actually get the autopsy bill from the company. And sometimes we'll get more fees. I don't really understand why we get a little bit of variance. I'm assuming it depends on what they do to the person.
It does, and our coroner, unfortunately, is in the district corner in Washington, Hanover, actually, Washington County. We should have a local coroner. It would help a lot. Dr. Warren, the district coroner, waits generally until he gets the results back from Kansas City, or from, yeah, Kansas City. And if you do a toxicology report that's complicated, sometimes it'll take a long time to come back. And it depends on what he orders, whether he orders a full tox or what, and that's why there's a variation in the amount.
Okay.
I know normally it may be two months before we actually get the bill. So it's, you know, somebody may say, oh, well, somebody had an unextended death, that might be them, but it's really not. It may be somebody different.
Does the county always...
Okay, I noticed the difference, two different dollar amounts. I thought maybe it was for the same function, but two different...
No.
Does the county always have to... We have to pay for that?
If the coroner orders it, yeah.
But what happens if the person who passed away had insurance? You'd think their insurance would reimburse that.
It's a separate thing.
It is, huh?
Yep, it's a legal thing. It's a law enforcement thing.
Oh, well, okay.
The family can order an autopsy if they want to, and that's about $2,500. The complicated autopsy was probably our truck accident on the county line because they had to do a full screen on him because of all of the transportation K dot and US dot requirements. I don't remember the other. The other, I think, was Roger Hayworth, was it not? I believe those were the two autopsies that we did.
Okay, so I see a company being paid called IAAO, and the payment is for membership dues coming from APR with APR.
Appraiser.
Oh, Appraiser, okay. I got you. Sorry. She doesn't have a lot of bills?
No. And a lot of times, it's for, especially at the end of the year, that's how they get some of their appraisal books and things like that. Now, this was probably an actual membership to an organization. So in January, you'll see a lot more of the organizations like North Central Kansas County Clerks. The Kansas County Clerk, so you guys will have your own commissioner districts, will be asking. So I'm assuming that's what that is for her, since it said membership. Yeah, she doesn't hardly have any bills ever.
Anything else, Alexis?
I don't think so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable for this month, December to, December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Are you ready to vote?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Oh, and then opposed. We got to sign these here. Yeah, I didn't sign both, I'm going to get them. There you go, yeah. Okay, I guess we go to the agenda which.
Oh, you know what, may I bring something up here because I'm, I'm just checking this and I meant to bring this up. Are these purchases from the, for the general fund for things like, this one says towel, toilet paper and gloves? Is that, and it's from Pierzone Incorporated, is that a Mr. Um, Ellis?
Yes, it's janitorial supplies here.
Okay, I, I think we had talked to him about trying to buy some of that locally and so I think we need to readdress that issue. Does the commission have any input on that?
No, I agree, we, we agreed to try to buy products locally up there.
Within ten percent.
They're not too much more expensive obviously than out of county, ten percent, right?
That's what we said, yeah.
Maybe he needs to be.
I will say that we'll have to install different toilet paper and paper towel holders if that's the case because we used to buy it locally and it would walk out the door and so that's why we put those commercial grade stuff in.
That'd be a reason to keep doing it then.
Um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I mean, we could ask the grocery store to see if they can get commercial.
They can, I know they can, because I did it for my store and I guess it depends on the brand that you want to get. But usually that company will give you the apparatus to hold the material if you're going to purchase their materials, so we could do that.
I'd say that's what we have now, so that's who we bought the materials for the stuff from and they provided the dispensers, so.
Okay, okay, that's, I just thought we had talked about that once before, maybe we need to mention that again.
And it's where he buys the wax for the floors and things like that too. I don't know, but yeah, some of it is probably stuff we could get here.
Okay, thank you.
Now, next on the agendas is road vacation hearing, uh, do we want to do that or? We do have some tax abatements and then some correspondence.
I believe each is, since it's marked for that time of seven thirty, I think we need to do it at that time and then we can go back to our first one.
Sounds fine, fine to be, okay, uh, do you have a paperwork for that road vacation hearing?
Can I pass?
Jim?
So on December sixteenth, you guys did the preliminary, this is now the actual vacation hearing. And technically you should hear comments to anybody.
And I guess maybe we should read it again here, I think it's that road by you Steve there.
I received the letter.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll read it again here, the final resolution in order, resolution number two thousand nineteen V dash zero two. Now on this thirtieth day of December two thousand nineteen, at a duly constituted and regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Lincoln County, Kansas, all members of said board being present, the matter of the vacation of a certain road comes on for final hearing in order before said board. After due consideration and after being duly advised in the premises, the board finds that on the sixteenth day of December two thousand nineteen, the said board did unanimously make a preliminary resolution two thousand nineteen R dash zero two, proposing a vac, to vacate a certain township line road located in Grant Township and Vesper Township. As in their judgment, said road is not a public utility by reason of neglect, non-use or inconvenience or from other cause or causes. Said road has become practically impassable and a necessity for said road as a public utility does not justify the expenditure of the necessary funds to repair said road or put the same in condition for public travel. Said road is described as follows, beginning at the southeast corner of section thirty-four Township eleven, range nine, also being the northeast corner of section three Township twelve, range nine, thence west to the southwest corner of section thirty-four Township eleven, range nine, also being the northwest corner of section three Township twelve, range nine, road right of way by B sixty foot. This closing does not affect Highway eighteen right of way. And that said preliminary resolutions herewith adopted and made a, a part of this order by reference. The board further finds that due and legal notice of said proposed vacation has been given by publication as required by law and the proof thereof has been duly filed with the county clerk. It is hereby ordered, all members voting in the affirmative, that the above described roads and every part thereof be, be, be vacated and hereby vacated as above described and then, and that the county clerk entering the proceedings concerning said vacation upon the records and that a copy thereof be certified to the Register of Deeds, Lincoln County, Kansas. Then it shows the Board of County Commissioners, that's three. And now we can discuss this, if there's any uh, discussion about it from the public or Alexis, you have anything else to say on this issue?
No, sir.
Mr. Gableman, do you have anything to say on this? Steve, that's right by you, you, what do you, you have any issue with this?
I'd like to see it close twenty years, you actually have.
I think you guys were the ones requesting it, weren't you?
It affects us and walkers.
Yeah.
And, and Dale Crocker, I was thinking they were both.
Okay, any other input by anyone? Now what, I guess we need to vote on it again for a final resolution? Okay, well, I'll make a motion then to uh, approve, vote, to approve this final resolution in order, resolution number two thousand nineteen V zero two dash zero two.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and second to uh, approve this final resolution, order of resolution number two thousand nineteen V zero two. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
If one of you was willing to give up your copy, I do need two originals.
Okay.
We need to sign them obviously, yeah, okay, here, you can have that copy, Dawn.
And then one gets filed in the Register of Deeds office and one stays on file in our office.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay.
The next one will be at seven forty-five for the budget hearing.
Do we have a few minutes or? amended budget hearings at seven forty-five, so we have a few minutes, Alexis, do you want to discuss anything else before that?
Well, I think we need to possibly decide what we want to do with these transfers before we do the budget hearing.
Okay.
Well, I don't, you can't, can you?
You won't be able to approve the resolutions, you can discuss, but if you don't want to amend any of the budgets, then the resolutions will be affected by that. All the resolutions except for, well, the only resolution that will be affected by that is one of the fire departments and one of the county general funds. And then I had, didn't do any resolutions for the highway department because I need your guys' direction. Or somebody's direction. Okay, I just sent you the spreadsheet, I replied to one of your emails that you had sent earlier today. I sent you that spreadsheet that has like the budget and the cash broke down for each of the phones.
Okay.
And normally what I do is I take whatever is the lowest dollar amount. So for example, county general, the lowest dollar amount is two hundred thirteen thousand eight ninety-five and that's on the budget side. And then I subtract out what our prior year expenses are and then I kind of determine what I think we could comfortably transfer. So the resolution I gave you is what I feel like we can comfortably transfer, but that doesn't mean that you guys want to transfer that dollar amount. That just means that the amount that I feel like we could do. Um, if you don't transfer the money out, then it basically gets taken over by county general as cash, which then reduces the levy for the next year. But if you transfer it out, then you have it in special, um, where I would put it in is the capital improvement fund and then it will hold there and then you can use that money to do bigger projects that you don't necessarily have the money to do and you don't want to levy the money to do, but everybody feels differently about saving money, how much to save, how much not to save. So you guys have to decide that.
And do we need to, again, I'm a little confused here, let's, uh, do we need to approve these resolutions then before we can really approve this amended budget, huh?
You'll do the amended budget first.
Okay.
Because some of the amounts in those resolutions are, are taken into consideration that you're going to amend the budgets.
Okay. And we, we don't have highway departments in here yet as part of, we'll have to determine that sometime here. So really before we can approve the amended budget, we have, would have to have highway department information, correct?
Um, no, you can approve the amended budget. You cannot transfer the highway departments until you do the amended budget.
Okay, but we, hopefully we'd have a ballpark figure of what they would like to have there before we amend that budget, right?
I've already amended it by ninety-eight thousand dollars, which is the gross amount that can be amended. I don't, so I sent you guys that spread, the little snippet of the spreadsheet. It's a very, it's really hard to explain, so let me just show you, so.
Especially those rookies.
When I decide.
Rookies here, they've never done this.
When I decide to work on amending the budget, I will put in what the cash carryover is or the cash balance is, sorry.
Okay.
So this is the cash balance as of, and the day that I did this was December eleventh, after we had done the end of month and I had time to sit down, they had already went through December eleventh for daily statements. So this cash balance is that, the budget balance is what was at the end of November. This pending expenses is actually A P and payroll that we just finished, originally when I did this, it was zero. I went ahead and put it in so I would know how much money I could possibly transfer, so we're just looking at the road and bridge fund. So on December eleventh, their cash balance was one million twenty-one thousand three hundred fourteen thousand. We have pending expenses for the month of December including payroll of a hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred forty dollars. And that includes the dollar amount that was paid for that big piece of equipment that you bought, sorry, whatever it was. Okay, so that leaves a cash balance of eight twenty-seven three forty-three. We are required to fund the two thousand twenty budget to carry over at least a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. So when you guys approved the budget in July, you said we're going to have this hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. If we don't carry over that dollar amount, then next year's budget is in dollar, or is in trouble. So then I subtract that out and I come up with the total. So originally, if this ninety-eight thousand dollars wasn't there, this number would be five hundred and some thousand dollars. What I do is take this dollar amount minus this, so on this side it's the budget balance, minus the pending and I put in a dollar amount to make these numbers close to being equal. And I try to leave it at a even amount of money. If I know that they're having revenue come in, then I adjust for that as well. And so then this number here is what is the prior year expenditure. So last year, we carry over in January, February and March, if any invoice is dated in two thousand eighteen, but it, it was received in two thousand nineteen, we still take it out. After March is current year budget and we just don't care. But the auditors will pull all of those invoices and they'll also pull any big invoices and if, let's say you guys approved them to buy a piece of equipment today and we got the invoice and the piece of equipment in February and everything was dated in February, you have already encumbered that expense in two thousand nineteen, so you have to take it out of two thousand nineteen, as long as you have everything by March. And so if I don't do that, the auditors do it for us and then that's what creates budget violations. So I take these two different dollar amounts and then I would take the six hundred and thirty-three thousand minus what I, past history is normally a good reflection on current history, so we would assume that there's probably thirty-two thousand dollars worth of bills out there that have not been received yet and so I would subtract that out. That's why I said I felt like five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is a good safe number. It's probably being conservative, you probably could do the six hundred thousand, but I don't know.
I see what you're saying now, yeah, okay.
Because I have no history and I don't, I haven't picked.
And where, where does that five seventy go, we're going to move that over to?
That's where you can move into those special equipment.
Special equipment fund, budget fund.
You can do special equipment, special county road, which we know that we need to do whatever dollar amount.
Which is for the bigger bridges and projects, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments. Um, number one, we do have some left over because we did not do a large equipment purchase as we had done in years prior when they were turning over the road, uh, motor graders. So I think that accounts for some of that unless I'm mistaken.
You're correct.
We also have a, a higher, um, we had a higher income for payment on past due property tax because we are preparing for a tax sale. And we also had a higher income in our ambulance department because we got our billing back on track and we retrieved some missing money from the year before.
Correct.
So could you just give us a comparison, do you happen to know Dawn, what the carryover was from last year? You didn't have that on here, did you?
Um, no, so like what the cash carryover is or would you like to know what the transfers were?
Um, well, I don't believe, I, I think we transferred everything we possibly could last year, so what was that transfer amount, please?
It was a hundred and eighty thousand, ninety thousand to special equipment, ninety thousand to cap, special county road.
Okay, so what I'm trying to point out here, especially for the onlookers, right now we're looking at a six hundred thousand dollar number instead of a two hundred thousand dollar number. And I'm trying to explain that that difference in the amount is due to some extraordinary income that we were able to collect from past due bills, um, better equipping ourselves with the ambulance billing and then not making some large purchases that we had been making in the highway department.
Okay, let me, let me correct you just one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This six hundred and thirty-three thousand is just in the road and bridge fund.
Why am I looking at, oh, you do have road and bridge on there?
Yeah.
So then what's the tip?
Chip seal, we didn't do a lot on chip seal, Alexis.
You didn't do the chip seal.
That saved us a lot of money.
And you didn't buy the equipment.
Yeah.
No, but what are we talking about then for the total transfer?
For, well, I don't know that because you do each of those individually, each, each department has their own sets of statutes, so we don't do.
Okay, so what I'm looking at then is just road and bridge and when you gave me the hundred and, what'd you say, eighty thousand, that was just for last year?
Yes.
For just road and bridge, excuse me.
Just road and bridge, yes.
I'm sorry, okay, so one, one at a time here, okay, I apologize, I thought we were using a total number when I looked down, you do have it updated as road and bridge. Okay, so then for that department, it's just because we didn't do the large purchase, but you're also saying we should have some income coming into that department as well because they haven't been billing the sheriff's department for fuel?
They haven't billed any of the departments that use for fuel since September, so September, November and December.
Prior year expenses could potentially be almost covered.
But then, well, I don't know, because that's the hard thing, I don't know what their fuel expense is costing. When I tried to look that up this evening and I just, we pay the highway department too many invoices, so each one is an invoice that I would have to manually add, go in and physically look at, so.
Okay, so just based on history, a thirty-two thousand dollar prior year expense is pretty nominal, nominal considering we still have missing income for that department. Okay.
Yeah, I just don't know, I, I don't feel comfortable telling you, I feel like we can transfer six hundred thousand dollars and then have them come in with fifty thousand dollars worth of bills that they purchase things. with fifty thousand dollars worth of bills that they purchased things. That may, they think, "Oh, I might be able to get that in a 2020 expense," but our auditors and me say, "No, I'm sorry, but that date on there says that you ordered it in 2019. It has to go back to 2019's budget." And the auditor looks at different things. We never really know what they look at, but I can tell you, they look at anything that comes in in the end of year. They review every single end-of-year invoice and look at date-wise. Did we put it in the right year? Are we trying to finagle? And they look at any big purchases. So if you had anything that's ten thousand dollars or more, they're looking at those invoices to see what is on them and when their dates are, and-
Okay, so then the question is for Mr. McKay. Do we have some outstanding invoices from this fall?
We've got nine thousand dollars potentially for that mower tractor that's being repaired. That nine thousand was the most it would be. They're saying those parts off North Carolina to see if they can be remanned, to re-install for lower cost. John Beer's twenty-one hundred to order new harnesses for the excavator, the old excavator. That way we can do diagnostic trouble shoot on it. And that's coming in, that's currently going on now, so there's a little over eleven thousand. The other costs for what we've ordered but have not received invoices for, that's actually in 2019. Tires have already been ordered, and it was around last month. So was the piping that we ordered, drain, drainage, that was already in those invoices. So I know that at least eleven thousand that's not accounted for on these, plus six hundred and thirty or twenty-six to get the laser level like we had talked about that Monday.
Well, then I think we're looking at an opportunity to alleviate a little bit of the levy for next year with this dollar amount. I mean, if we're not making a half a million dollar purchase in equipment, which we've already purchased the excavator this year that we had talked about.
Yep, we purchased one excavator and a used dump truck.
And a tractor.
And a tractor, and one small mower. The graders, we've got some that I felt we could get them by another year. We, I'm going to have the expenses with some of my other equipment. I've got dump trailers from nineteen eighty-seven that have been rewelded together so many times, they're shot. I mean, dump trailer with the heavy use that we would use, fifteen, twenty years is not expected life expectancy. And two of my dump trailers are nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety.
Well, it looks like Dawn's figures of five seventy-five are very much in the ballpark, in my opinion.
Yep, I feel that will be appropriate.
Yeah, me too.
No, it's just a matter of, you know, where you want to go. So with that note, I'm, I've already convened that you have the budget hearing. I'm gonna run upstairs and grab my budget book that has the statute numbers for those mass transfer, just to make sure that we're okay. But you guys can go ahead and take a public comment regarding the budget hearing. So you have copies. I do have a couple of copies for anybody that needs or wants to look at.
This is the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I will be right back.
Anybody want to read the budget?
Mr. Vice Acting Chairman, this might be time for a two-minute secret meeting somewhere.
You wanna take a recess?
I think so.
We'll take a five-minute recess, please, Alexis.
Sure.
Randy, I'll look at one of those.
Okay, yeah, right here. Anybody else can too. It's amended budget, we're not amending it much. You heard what Dawn was saying. It's based on what we haven't used and what we carry over from. Like, we have more in the highway department this year because we have fewer employees, and also we have bought less equipment, so we have extra money more than we budgeted. And so that's one issue, and some other departments too. It isn't that much difference, really.
Well, the biggest difference under ambulance fees, this year, we said that we would budget seventy-five thousand in income, and it looks like we can be closer to one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-one.
Yeah.
So that's nearly double.
Well, and some of the, some of it is cash carryover, so the cash from last year ended up being higher than expected. That's that very top line, if you want to look, it will show you what-
That'll cover cash balance, yeah.
Yeah.
Dawn, what is miscellaneous under the change for the Sylvan Grove Rural Fire Department? What's the four thousand dollars under miscellaneous mean?
They received a grant, or I shouldn't say grant, but money from the Post Rock Wind Farm. And I think they also received money from Smokey Hills to help buy equipment. So what we were gonna do is put in their special equipment so that way when they get enough money to buy something, they can buy something with it. And so a lot of times we'll do that. Sometimes with fire departments, they sell equipment, so if they sold it in a used truck. The only way they can get the money back into their special equipment is to run it through their regular operating fund, amend their budget, and transfer.
Okay, there's another miscellaneous for four thousand under ambulance?
I think they also received a grant from Post Rock Wind Farm as well. So basically, they showed up one day with a check and said they were making a donation. They wanted to make a donation to the Lincoln County Fire Department, and I asked them specifically, "What fire department do you want?" Because we have five of them. And they, they decided that they wanted to donate it to the fire department and the ambulance service that serviced where their towers are at, which would be the Sylvan Grove Fire, Rural Fire, and the Lincoln County Ambulance. So, which was very nice.
Yes. Why, why are the neighborhood revitalization numbers negative? I'm not sure what that means.
So anybody that participates in the neighborhood revitalization program gets their taxes rebated out back to them. So let's say, for example, I do something, they don't get a hundred percent of their taxes, they just get a percentage of their new improvement that they did.
And then you just calculate it based on the mill for each department is what the reduction is?
Yes. So what happens in Comtech is it gets entered in as a negative tax disbursement, and so it gets added to when Leanne does her tax disbursement. But there's no way to show that on the budget, so they put it in as a negative like that.
Okay. And then miscellaneous under road and bridge?
That might be equipment sale. It might be that they sold motor blades, whatever you call them.
They used crater blades or-
Yeah, it's just miscellaneous income. Normally, if they sell equipment, I put that it's equipment sale, but... And it may just be something that we deemed miscellaneous income when we were receipting the money in.
It was probably the crater that was sold to Sylvan, majority of it.
Okay, so for the public, basically, road and bridge, ambulance, Sylvan Grove Rural Fire Department, those are the three main changes. None of the other county departments have changed, I believe.
No, I, well, all of the county general changed by a hundred thousand, didn't it? And-
But you just put that under a total to capital improvement. It's not that we added any numbers to any individual department, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, you guys can choose to do that or choose not to do that. And you can still amend the budget if you want to. It gives us the budget authority, but you can choose not to do the transfer if you don't want to.
Why is the interest on idle funds so much higher than what we assumed?
I think the interest rate is better this past year than it was prior years.
So we just were basing it off your prior?
Correct. And I think they do that to be conservative a little bit with the, when we do the budget, because we don't really always know-
Yeah, but it's more than tripled. That's big. Well, I will say this. I have no problem justifying doing the transfer in the capital improvement fund because about thirty thousand of that comes from delinquent taxes being collected. And if we put that hundred thousand into the capital improvement fund, I believe we can use that to do the courthouse repairs. Am I correct?
Correct.
So that means if the courthouse repairs cost a total of a hundred thousand, we will have it in there, and almost fifty percent of that is coming from delinquent tax collection?
Correct.
Now, that's just from, that's just the appropriation from the delinquent taxes in the general fund. What are we doing with the delinquent tax increase to the road and bridge? Is that just being transferred into this? Is that what you're saying is transferred into the special county road?
Well, that's what's helping fuel the need to amend their budget by ninety-eight thousand. That's giving you ninety-eight thousand dollars more to be able to transfer. Now, I don't think just their delinquent tax collection just was at ninety-eight thousand, but I-
No, it was, we assumed five thousand, it actually ended up being thirty-three thousand, their appropriation. So... Why is it that no delinquent tax collection is forwarded to any of the fire department districts? Is that just because it's its own separate taxing entity?
It is, but a lot of times those smaller districts, their, their delinquency isn't as large as countywide. So because it's only a smaller area, so I probably just didn't break it out or split it out. I probably grouped everything together. But I could tell you what their delinquent tax is. But a lot of the smaller entities, their delinquent tax is a lot less than what the county's is, just because their area is so much smaller, if that makes sense, and their valuations are smaller. And it could be that they're in an area that they paid their taxes and another area that did not. The delinquent tax is distributed just like the tax collection. So it, when it comes in, it goes to all of the entities in which that taxing unit is made up of. It's just considered delinquent, and so it gets dispersed at different times than what the current tax is. But that's all something that Leanne does. So if, let's say you were delinquent on your taxes being in Sylvan Grove. When you did come in to pay for it, then your, the, the entities that make up your taxing unit would get that money as a delinquent tax disbursement. But if you were not delinquent, and somebody in the Beverly Fire District or in the city of Beverly was delinquent, and they come in and pay their taxes, then the city of Beverly's taxing unit gets the money. So it's based upon the taxing unit that the person is delinquent in. So some areas, there is no delinquency, other areas, there is massive delinquency.
Well, I would like to suggest that we do an amendment on the road and bridge budget because basically what we're looking at is we had suggested that we would have a two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollar cash balance carryover. Now, we're looking at four-hundred-and-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollar cash carryover. So that in and of itself allows us to have a little bit of capital to make some purchases. It looks to me like the ninety-eight thousand transfer is coming from the delinquent tax increase and the miscellaneous, which would be sale of equipment. Correct?
I believe that's correct. I believe it's cash carryover, delinquency. I don't have one, sorry. And I don't multitask well anymore. Well, you, you said highway department, right?
We are also, yes, I'm looking at the highway department specifically on this amended budget. And specifically, we also have budgeted for next year three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand five hundred for capital outlay.
Correct. So if you, if you start on line one where it says unencumbered cash balance, the 2019 adopted budget says they would carry over two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-four. But in the 2019 proposed budget, which is what we're amending, they actually carried over four-hundred-and-five thousand seven eighty-seven. So to be able to spend that difference or to be able to transfer it out, you have to amend the budget. So that's why I said most of these funds is just in their cash carryover alone. So part of that is derived from the fact that maybe I budgeted fifty thousand in prior year expense, but they really only had thirty-two thousand dollars in prior year expense. So it creates a extra cash. So then the adware tax I just left alone, delinquent tax was obvious that they received more money. I left motor vehicle tax alone, recreational alone, sixteen-twenty M alone, commercial, watercraft. Those are all those levy taxes that all based upon the, based upon the distribution. I can tell you that they're not a hundred percent collected on any of those, but I didn't know where Leanne was at with the distribution, so we always just say they're the same. Special city-county highway, the same. Reimbursements I left is the same, that's that sixty thousand dollars that I said. Even if it says forty-three ninety, sixty thousand is what you have to have to be able to fund your budget. So anything that is not, in that line item that you guys, when you get your budget, that's the eleven nineteen forty-three ninety that has the reimbursements coming in as fuel, the auditor is gonna decrease that by sixty thousand and will only be able to respend whatever's over that. So reimbursement that is a true reimbursement allows you to be able to expend the money. So let's say, for example, if Brendan bought a culvert for a farmer to put in, and that farmer reimburses part of the cost. If that was all done in the same year, he could put that as a reimbursement and respend that money to buy a different farmer, a different culvert. That's just something that you can do. So like when you're doing gravel purchases, if you haul in extra material and you end up having extra material left and you want to sell that to somebody, that would be a true reimbursement as long as it happens in the same year. So we count fuel as a, as a true reimbursement because they're expending it and purchasing it, and the, and the departments are, are using it, and they're repaying the highway department, so that would all be a reimbursement. But the auditor requires this fund to have at least sixty thousand dollars in reimbursement. So if there was one year that we were in budget violation because we didn't meet that sixty thousand dollars, and the highway department had respent the money. So that was my bad, I got an education lesson that time. In lieu of tax, that is basically the Wilson Lake Corps of Engineers. They're the only ones that pay us in lieu of tax, and of course, neighborhood revitalization, and then the miscellaneous, and it's sixty-nine thousand. So yes, I do believe that is probably the sale of the equipment to Purple Wave and also the grader. So that would be anything that was sold during the year. I basically kind of just, because these forms are only limited, and the auditor's only limited, so I try to accumulate what I think that they're adding together. So that's where his money came from, is between cash carryover, delinquent, and the miscellaneous. Rough education lesson, sorry.
Yeah. So what's the time thing on? Do we need to do this? We have to approve something because it's this year, 2019?
Yes.
So now we have to approve an amended budget?
Correct.
Or not approve it?
If you don't amend, if you don't amend the budget, then some of those resolutions come off the table.
Alexis, you got any input on this or any suggestion?
Well... I guess I just don't want to see us amend this to the higher amount, knowing where we're getting the money from, which was prior collections and some other things that, you know, that actually makes more money available to spend, which is what we're trying to do at the- which is what we're trying to do with this amended budget because we have it. But I don't want to see that turn into a budget request for next year that is equal to the total amount that we're looking at now. You know, if this can be viewed as a one-time increase because of the situation that we're in, then I don't see a reason that we shouldn't capitalize on using the money and, and basically making some of those purchases that we won't need to tax for next year in order to be, to be made. However, I don't want to see a budget come back across to the commission that says, well, we spent X last year, so we need to have exactly this much again next year. Because it's really not based on actual need. It's based on recuperating some of the money and maybe banking that or saving that over for the year so that it can be spent on what I would like to call one-time purchases.
And like in the highway department, we didn't buy them as much equipment as had earlier been planned. And also the chip seal was only partially a patch job. So we did not, we need really that money for this next year probably for, to do the chip seal totally, right? And, uh, and maybe, there may be some more purchase of machinery.
When we do this amended budget, it actually comes across the table as we're putting more money into the budget.
Right.
But I'm trying to explain that it's really, we're, we've collected more money. That's where it's coming from. So to, to request that the taxpayers then fund that same dollar amount next year would be totally inappropriate, in my opinion.
Right. What we got here is just a carryover. This is your money we're going to put into next year. Yeah, a carryover of what we, right.
It looks like that was the amount that was budgeted, and then you could potentially justify taxing for that same amount in the future. Do you follow me?
Yeah, raising taxes because we're going to have this much ex- extra left over from...
Exactly, exactly.
This extra money's going to be earmarked for usually one-time purchases and stuff. It'll be gone this year.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Well, I agree too.
Do we have public comment?
What was that, Alexis?
Do, have we had public comment? I haven't seen any.
Yeah, what's the public think? Anyone out there got an opinion on this? A lot of mine is we have, well, you heard here, I guess. I'm trying to figure it out myself. We have, we haven't spent as much as we budgeted, especially the highway department. And but, but we did put up chip seal because we got a situation. We just didn't get to it done in time over by Sylvan there. So we did a chip seal patch, which was a lot cheaper. That saves quite a bit of money that we would have probably spent on a normal year. And also some of the equipment we didn't buy.
They bought, buying equipment early.
Right, we held off on a lot of equipment. Well, we knew, you guys know the situation we've had with, uh, with some of our highway department people leaving, and then we didn't have any management for several months. So a lot of that was all put on hold. That's why we're in this position, really. But I, for, I think what Dawn has put here, this amended certificate, I think I would, uh, before it myself here, I think she's, uh, done some good judgment on deciding what we need here with these resolutions on, on these departments as we've talked them here. And it's my opinion anyway. Do you have any input, Alexis or Jim?
Well, I talked about this to Dawn, and I'm perfectly satisfied that this is the best, based on the best data we have. And I think we ought to go with it.
Alexis, anything?
I just want to reiterate here. We're looking at the general fund line item, the road and bridge line item, the ambulance line item, and the Sylvan Grove line item. So when this public, when this budget is now published, it's going to look like we have proposed expenditures for two-point-seven million in our general fund, two-point-five-four million in our road and bridge, four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand for ambulance, when in all actuality, the expenditures that we projected to financially spend in one given year were several hundred thousand less in those first two line items I gave you, and forty, about four thousand less than the other one. So I'm just reiterating the point that because we are adopting this budget with the higher numbers does not mean we're actually taxing for that amount. We're only levying the amount that we proposed in the original budget. So therefore, next year, we don't need to start with the numbers that we have on the table this year because we recuperated extra revenue. Does everyone follow that? I just don't want that to be lost in next year's budget discussion.
And I was just, just for the public here, they don't all have a handout. What we're doing is we're, our adopted budget for this year was five billion, five-hundred, ten thousand dollars, seven-hundred, seven dollars. And on a proposed amended budget because of this carryover would be five billion, seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-seven thou- dollars, which is two-hundred-and, uh, nine thousand more than our adopt budget. That's what we're at here. But, but again, it ain't raising taxes. It's carrying over money we haven't spent. As long as we realize that and don't think we have to.
It's not raising taxes, but it's also not going to be an income that is recapturable in the future, per se.
Right.
Just, okay, just the clarification there is what I'm worried about.
Right. So are we, you ready to make a motion to approve this or? I'll, uh, ask for one. Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve this amended certificate for county or 2019 that we have in front of us here. And, uh, and the totals.
Just, I'd read the summary thing and then you...
Yeah, I'll just do the summary of, we got six amendments here. Well, we haven't done the amendments yet. We're just doing, the, of, making motions to approve this amended budget. And, uh, from an adopted budget of five billion, five-hundred, ten thousand, seven-hundred, seven dollars to a proposed amended budget of five million, seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-seven dollars.
I shall second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend this budget to the amounts I stated, so stated. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, none opposed.
You need all this signed?
Uh, just one copy please, and I will add in parentheses the amended, the budgets specifically that you amended.
Right. Where do we sign here? What says it's tested?
Um, where all those lines are out.
Assistive, oh, over here. Okay. Your pen doesn't work, yeah?
Well, I'm going through the basket here.
You got those cheap pens?
Oh, they're from, that's not going to work.
Those funeral pens?
No, these are K-Camp pens. That's worse.
And now I guess we'll, we want to discuss these, these resolutions. Alexis, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you have a copy of these resolutions?
I do.
Uh, Dawn has provided us with four resolutions. Again, I don't know if we could, we'll, I guess I'll read them out here. There are four resolutions to this amended budget. Uh, one's called, uh, Resolution 2019 dash sixteen. It says, "Be it resolved this thirtieth day of December, 2019 by the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, in accordance with the 2019 Lincoln County adopted budget, to hereby authorize a transfer of ten thousand dollars, December thirtieth, 2019, from the Lincoln County General Fund, which is ten dash one dash four three seven two, into the Lincoln County Transportation Bus Fund, adopted by the Cow, Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, this thirtieth day of December, 2019." Now, this is...
Yeah, I'd like, we ought to do each one separately, I think. And this is fairly straightforward. So I move, we approve, uh, Resolution 2019 dash sixteen, moving funds into the transportation fund.
Okay, for the public's interest, Dawn, you stated earlier that this is for, the bus fund was needing this transferred funds.
This would be the second half. So we allot twenty thousand dollars a year. We do the first half, and then we don't do the second half until they need it.
Right, which is now...
I second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to, uh, adopt the Resolution 2001 nineteen dash sixteen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And you have the originals.
Okay.
Sorry, I found my copies, but you can hear my copies.
Next, we'll have another resolution here, Resolution 2019 dash seventeen, Transfer of Funds. Be it resolved this thirtieth day of December, 2019 pursuant to KSA nineteen dash three-six-one-two, number C, or letter C, to transfer funds from the general operating fund of each rural fire district into the special equipment fund of that district in the following amounts. Beverly Rural Fire Operating to Beverly Rural Fire Special Equipment, sixteen thousand dollars. First Rural Fire Operating to First Rural Fire Special Equipment, forty-four thousand dollars. Hunter Rural Fire Operating to Hunter Rural Fire Special Equipment, eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Sylvan Grove Rural Fire Operating to Sylvan Grove Rural Fire Special Equipment, fifteen thousand dollars. And then it'd be signed by us. Now, uh, you guys have any discussion on this, Alexis or Jim?
Well, first I'll make a motion to...
I would like to know, do we, Dawn, do you have immediate access to their, um, current balances? Because I'm still, after all this time, I'm still a little confused. I know they're their own taxing entities, but if we're approving things like these transferred funds, um, I guess I'd like to know what their, their total available is to them.
I'm not sure that you necessarily have to, but because we include them to help save money in our budget, we have to report it in the budget, so therefore it needs to be transferred by resolution, even though there's state statute that allows it. But I can tell you what the balances are.
If they are independently operating, then basically all their income is based on valuation. So anytime valuation goes up, their income goes up. They don't, I mean, I guess unless their boards are specifically budgeting to request less than the valuation for their mill rate, they're always going to get an increased amount, correct?
Most of the time, their fire boards request the same dollar amount. So if you notice that Barnard Rural Fire isn't on that resolution, they didn't have enough money to transfer. Somebody really knows, needs to talk to their board and say, maybe you guys need to consider increasing your budget so that you have money to transfer. Because what they're doing is they're building their accounts so that they can buy a new fire truck. Um, so they can buy new hose, buy new equipment, the, um, air packs. Everything is expensive.
First Rural Fire, I don't, you know, know how many trucks they have, but a forty-four thousand transfer, I'm just wondering, you know, what's in the bank for them if they're transferring forty-four thousand out of one year's tax levy?
If you hang on one second, I will tell you, and I can tell you with First Rural Fire, they tend to respond to every fire. We just were lucky this past year that we didn't have as many fires as what they've had in years past.
It's not a criticism. I'm appreciative of everyone. I know they're volunteering.
I will say this.
I'm just wondering about how that works with the mill levy since we're not really setting their, we're not really setting their budget, correct? I mean, they're, when they turn in their numbers, they're getting their own taxes according to the mill rate and the valuation of their district.
Correct. Okay, Barnard specially, Barnard Rural Fire Special Equipment has eighty-three thousand, seven-eighty-one. So that's probably why they are just staying where they're at. Beverly Rural Fire, and they have a new fire station. So, you know, they're probably set. Beverly Rural Fire has twenty-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighteen, fifty-four, and they do have a truck that is being leased purchased right now. First Rural Fire has eighty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars, and they do have a truck that is being leased purchased. So I really thought about calling and talking to them about maybe us just going ahead and paying off that lease purchase and saving the interest. Um, Hunter Rural Fire has thirty-three thousand, three-fifty-two, fifty-eight. Denmark has a new station. I don't know what the Hunter station is like. Um, Sylvan Rural Fire has forty thousand, five-sixty-one, and they do have a new station now. So most of their funds are going to be used to buy new equipment, upgrade their equipment. And we've seen smaller balances.
How do, how do they, uh, if they would want to raise taxes, do, does the people in the fire department request, uh, tax levy rate?
The governing board, I send them a letter out in, in June and tell them it's about time to start thinking about their budget, what would they like to do? This is the dollar amount that they levied the previous year, and then whatever I get back, they normally meet, and then they send back. Sometimes they'll increase it, sometimes they'll leave it alone.
But that has to be approved.
There used to be a five mil max, um, where they couldn't, but when the tax lid went off, that went away. Now the tax lid is back on. However, emergency services are still exempted. So a couple of the fire departments chose to increase, which was First Rural Fire and Hunter. I think Beverly increased two years ago because they had gotten down to where they didn't have hardly any money.
Does that have to be approved by the voters?
No.
They just say we want to, they could just raise, kind of like school board, they could just raise.
Yes, but they normally do it. I don't think they do it egregious.
Oh, no, I'm not thinking they do. I just didn't know the policy, how they did it.
I don't think the discussion is a criticism of the board as much as it is an understanding of how the funds are acquired. Because basically, when you choose to be on that fire board, then you're responsible for that dollar amount. And really, the commission has no authority over that. I just wanted to be clear.
So really, I'm surprised that they, the commissioners, like, like we have authority now to even do a transfer because it's really, they're doing the tax, just like we don't have to do it with a library or something.
The auditors make you guys do that because they're included in our budget. Now, if we want to make them pay for their own budget advertisement, which is, and, and do their own separate, I mean, I'm sure they would be fine. But a long time ago, prior to me, we chose to consolidate all the budgets and take care of the cemeteries to try to help them save money.
Sure.
So that all of their money wasn't just going to publications.
Okay. I understand now. That's common sense there. Because we really don't have no authority over none of this stuff. So in a way, us approving this is, we don't have no power to say yes or no, really, do we?
Well, it is definitely the best way to centralize the expense. Because if Lincoln County is taking care of the expense for all the rural districts, then they're not individually paying out for separate bills on everything that they do for their budget.
Yeah. Well, well, you have any other issues with this, Alexis? This fire, uh, resolution?
No.
So Jim, does your motion still stand to approve that?
It's approved, 2019 seventeen.
I'll second. This motion's been made as second to approve Resolution 2019 dash seventeen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, none opposed. We'll sign this.
The last two, we're probably going to need some education on.
Yeah, we got the next resolution. Resolution 2019 dash eighteen, Transfer of Funds. Be it resolved this thirtieth day of December, 2019 by the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Kansas, pursuant to the provisions of KSA nineteen dash one-twenty, in accordance with the 2019 Lincoln County adopted budget, to hereby authorize transfer of a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars from the Lincoln County General Fund into the Lincoln County Capital Improvement Fund, adopted by Lincoln County Board of Commissioners the thirtieth day of December nineteenth, if we approve it. Yeah, can you explain now again what this is for, Dawn?
So basically, the only place that you can go with your carryover funds is leave them in county general and let it decrease the tax levy to the following year, or transfer it out for specific items in which you guys approve and you have a capital improvement plan. And so that is all of the funds combined together. So ten-one, which is, uh, county general to, um, ten-sixteen, which is the nursing home, is all smushed together, and whatever the ending line item is, I kind of add everything together. And this is the dollar amount that I feel comfortable with being able to transfer into the capital improvement fund to be used for things like the walking bottom trailer at the landfill, the backhoe at the landfill, new transportation buses. It has computer equipment for the courthouse and office equipment for the courthouse. It has, um, special, or building maintenance. Basically, any fund that contributes to it is what you guys propose. In the past, you've taken an ambulance out of there, even though they don't contribute to it. Um, I want to say they took something, I believe we put some nursing home money in it, the one year, leftover nursing home money.
I think we put the amount that we withheld for past due rent. I think we transferred that out to the end of the year.
So there's different things, and you guys approve that. I don't normally bring that down every year unless there's something that is not on the plan that you guys decide you want to pay for.
It's just a transfer of money to get to another...
It's just a, some people call it a slush fund. I call it our contingency fund. If we really had something happen, we would have the money to pay for.
Yeah.
But the one-seventy-five is a well-thought-out reasonable amount. But the one seventy five is a well thought out reasonable amount to to transfer.
I feel like it's a safe amount. You can do less if you want to be able to reduce the tax levy for next year.
Could you give us the current balance of the um fund?
As of today?
Yeah.
If, yeah, if you have that, please.
The current balance as of in the last activity, so that was twelve nineteen is is the last day that the daily settlement was done. Is five hundred and thirty six thousand three hundred and sixty seven dollars and twenty one cents. And we had a hundred and forty six thousand seventy two dollars worth of expenditures. We are required to carry over a hundred and sixty one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars to fund the twenty twenty budget. So it leaves a difference of two hundred and thirteen thousand. So I always tell you the lesser amount, so on the budget side, there's two hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars and sixty four cents remaining in budget. For all of the funds combined.
Okay.
So the one seventy five sounds good to me.
And last year, prior year expense, we paid thirty one thousand four oh four fifty nine.
So what were this year expenses out of there for a hundred and forty thousand?
The hundred and forty six thousand is this month's payroll and accounts payable expenditures. Is that what you're looking at?
No, when I said about the balance of the fund, you said five hundred thousand, and then you said our our expenditures from last year, or maybe you said this year were a hundred and forty six thousand. I thought you meant.
Sorry.
Capital improvement. What did we spend out of capital improvement for nineteen?
Capital improvement for nineteen. I apologize. I meant that hundred and forty six thousand is December's payroll and expenses.
Out of our cash balance?
Yes. Capital Improvement Fund, we went from a beginning balance of seven hundred and twenty seven thousand to an ending balance of seven hundred and fifteen. And I believe we spent ten thousand four hundred eighty five dollars. That might have been that nursing home.
Oh, yeah, for the door, uh.
I would like to, I would like to propose to the board that we take this opportunity to give this tax rate back to the citizens this year. We obviously have over half a million in the bank for projects and purchases that we may or may not need to do. We're talking about improving our budget standing for next year without levying for that additional money because. We've actually not had the amount of expenses in nineteen as what we had budgeted. So I think this is our perfect opportunity to let that money roll over and reduce the needed um required amount we need for next year.
Well, we have to do one hundred and sixty one, didn't you say? We budgeted for it.
Well.
Hundred and sixty one for twenty twenty, didn't you say?
Yes, that's what the required carryover is. So what she's saying is make that required carryover less. So then what happens to that? Is that number grows, so when you calculate your budgets, the needed tax dollars to the needed ad valorem tax to be levied is less. Is what she's saying. So it's basically reducing the tax levy to next year.
Then it's gonna have to go up the following year.
In my personal opinion, this is the best way to do it right now, because we're we're sitting fairly comfortable in most of the departments with what we've done with our capital outlays and our transfers. And as we explained earlier, generating some additional revenue from gathering some that was owed past due. And this actually doesn't affect the budget authority as the amended budget would.
So are you recommending zero then instead of a hundred and seventy five thousand, Alexis?
Correct.
Then we'd still have what?
We still have seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
If we added this one seventy five, it'd make it up that much more. And do you see any big expenses coming? If we do this, we've planned to redo the courthouse something, but that was partially grant money, wasn't it?
Well.
But we don't know how much that'd be.
We don't know what the cost is.
Yeah.
But if we. Plan it right, you could phase it into phases where you could take advantage of applying for grant funds throughout the year, rather than doing one massive big project, you could. Do where you can take advantage of the state historical grant funds in smaller portions. So they're only gonna give you X amount of dollars to begin with.
Right.
So you can choose to do.
I think it was eighty percent up to ninety thousand.
So we could do the front steps maybe one year, and the back steps, another grant cycle. You could also do those tax credits. I don't want to volunteer to do them, but. They say that a lot of places are very successful and it doesn't take a lot to sell them. But there's different avenues as far as that goes, but we do need to do something for the courthouse. Just, it maybe broke out in phases.
Right, okay.
As our courthouse security upgrading systems come out of this? Cameras, computers.
It can. Uh, the computers do can, and they did that a long time ago when we had the AS four hundred because that's such a costly expense. But now we're on the cloud system, um, but the computers were included a very long time ago, especially when we did the rewiring. I do believe we need to do rewiring and make our wiring look nice.
But we were discussing, you guys were still discussing yours, computer systems in a courthouse here. Would that be in now of this budget too?
No, that would be out of our regular operating.
Your regular operating budget.
But to purchase the upgraded security system, that could be something that was.
Yeah, cameras and stuff. Well, I'm just thinking if we have any major expenses we know of coming up this year.
I don't, I can't think of any besides.
The courthouse thing, and that may be in phases, like you said. What do you think, Jim, on this?
Well, I'd like to give money back, but I don't want to get us in a hole, but if we got seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that ought to get us through the year unless we have something. Catastrophic, and then we're gonna have to do some catastrophic financing for that, so.
Yeah.
I can go along with that.
So make it zero?
Yeah.
So you want to just, you'll just refer.
We just don't do the transfer.
We just won't do the transfer?
Correct.
Okay, do we want to make a motion, say, to disapprove resolution?
We just ignore it, right?
Just ignore it?
Yeah.
Is that what you want, Alexis, too?
That is what I would like to see happen.
That's fine with me too. I agree with that too, since we have so much in the, in that fund, in the improvement fund. Okay, we will ignore them. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen was not approved. Even, we didn't vote on it, we just ignored it.
No, and if we do a different resolution, we'll probably rename it that number in.
Okay. All right, we have one more resolution here, two thousand nineteen dash nineteen, transfer of funds. Be resolved this thirteenth day of December two thousand nineteen, pursuant to KSA sixty five dash two zero four. To transfer eighteen thousand dollars from the Lincoln County Health Fund, two thousand nineteen budgeted funds into the Lincoln County Health Capital Outlay Fund.
Now, we did not receive any information from the head of that department.
Right, that's right.
So this is a blind guess, well, there's some experience on Don's part. But I'm concerned that the department head didn't attempt to cooperate on the budget when that's their major effort for the year. I don't know what to do about this. Will you just? Pick eighteen thousand, or you just grab a number out of the air, or what?
Is that, where did, did you come up with that number?
So I, I would like to say a few things to this. Um, I have the same concern that we didn't get a response just to know exactly what we're dealing with. I will say on um Mrs. Reiner's behalf. She has been very prudent with her budgets and explaining them. I do know that she has a little bit of a capital outlay that already exists. And she had indicated to me that that was how she was going to pay the difference and the increase for the cost. Um, I believe it was related to the consultant fees that were going up because they had to get a new consultant for their medical director. And there was another increase in cost. Oh, the contract, I think now for Nex Tech is increasing. And almost tripling, so she intended to pay some of those increased costs out of what she had been transferring into the capital outlay fund. But that also brings me to question why there is the ability to transfer this much every year.
Last year, we transferred ten thousand dollars. Um. The spreadsheet that I emailed to you and kind of the one that I showed you has a cash balance after her required carryover of nineteen thousand. And a budget balance of thirty two thousand, so of course you can't transfer if you don't have the cash to do so. So I'm not quite sure why her cash and her budget aren't matching a little bit more. But.
Okay, so does, I mean, what, does that indicate? So she, almost eight thousand dollars difference, right? Is that what I'm seeing, thirty?
Uh, nineteen to thirty two. I'm not really sure. Um, the thirty two thousand sixty seven is what her budget is remaining, nineteen thousand eight sixty seven is what we have for cash. Which is the difference of twelve thousand two hundred dollars. So for some reason. Either we haven't collected or the taxes haven't been collected. Or something has happened that has that, normally that's closer, nor, or the opposite. Normally you have more cash than you have budget. But. We can still, but, still transfer up to, I think, eighteen thousand. Last year, she had prior year expenses of one thousand four hundred and six dollars. And she has reimbursements that will go back into her fund tomorrow of seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty five cents.
So, but how, but how are we deriving at this eighteen thousand dollar transfer number?
Because she has nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty seven dollars in excess of cash that she's required to carry over.
That was budgeted?
Yes, there was thirty two thousand dollars that was budgeted. So technically, she should have thirty two thousand dollars worth of cash somewhere. But she doesn't have, so that tells me either her patient fees were overestimated. Or there was a grant that was.
Her expenses were increased this year because she already had to start paying those increased numbers for the contract for the medical provider. I think, yeah, maybe it's the difference between not as much income and more expenditures.
Well, what do we want to do about this resolution? We can't, we need to do it tonight.
Do you want to know how much money she has in her capital outlay?
Yes, please.
Okay, she has seventy one thousand seventy three dollars in her capital outlay.
Uh, well, that's more than enough to cover those increased expenditures I was talking about. We're talking about maybe a thousand dollars more a month. To pay for the medical consultant that tripled and the Nex Tech billing that for the um.
New computers.
The IT, the IT service, right. So that's, she has more than enough in there. Maybe we should just leave it alone. It doesn't affect her budget for next year.
No, it will just do like it's going to do in County General and reduce the amount of money that she is required to levy.
I suggest we just do the same thing we just did with the general fund and let those roll over in in a cash situation so that we're not levying against it for next year's taxes.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think so too. If she has enough capital outlay to pay for that, new computers and the network.
And I didn't prepare resolutions for the highway department because I didn't really know what to prepare, so if you guys tell me what you're thinking, I will get them.
Well, maybe we can have a discussion here. Now, we're done now with the resolutions. Brett Brennan's here with Alexis.
Yes.
Okay, you guys come on up.
I would like to suggest that while we're on this topic, can we just go ahead and discuss? What the transfer would be for this department and and get that out of the way?
Yeah, sounds good.
Can we let Tanner do his little?
Unless Mr. News needs to leave.
Yeah, can we let him do his little part first? That way he doesn't have to.
Well, Tanner's here. Uh, can we let him go first? I think Danny could go home, probably.
Sure.
He just has to talk about the tech point project.
Okay.
All right, so I was gonna talk about the tech point project. Uh, last month, I talked about wrapping some of these bid docs up and begin advertising them. Uh, we have the request for bids completed. Um, and so Brennan's gonna take you to the newspaper tomorrow, and we're gonna start advertising for that project. Uh, it's to do the tech pointing on those four projects uh by Denmark. Um, so we're gonna begin advertising, open bids on January twenty seventh at two P M. Um, so I plan on just making that a day that I'm here. And then I'll open the bids at two o'clock, read them aloud, and then we can uh review those and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Yeah, just moving forward, so.
You know, I forgot, we've talked about this before, but I forgot to do it. Now, we getting grant money for that, or is?
No, this is all gonna be county funds.
County funds, right.
Yep, yep. So we're getting grant money for the off system, uh, one twelve.
And that one out here, by the Rocky Hill Road.
Yep, that's correct, and we're gonna start surveying, start the survey work tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
So there'll probably be surveyors out there looking at that if anyone asks.
In this wonderful weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's not too slick through there.
Any farther along on that Kyle Wall Bridge, that sixty five, isn't it?
Yes. So I talked about previously, about two or three meetings back, they have done the study on it. The truss is rated at twenty seven, forty three, forty three.
I remember that from last week. I want, that's where we're standing right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the structure out west is Sylvan. Yeah, the truss, like, like Brennan says, it was higher than most truss. Usually trusses, you get about eight tons, eight to ten tons. This one's actually. Uh, twenty seven, forty three, forty three. Um, it's got two wood approach fans on each side, so actually there's four approach fans, um, two on each side. Um, they're the ones that govern the three ton, I think there's some old timber beams. Uh, one of them's got a cracked beam with a system beside it. Um, so that's what actually governs the uh, the loading on that.
So that's just a pending action, and we get to it when we get to it.
Well, to repair the cost of it, to replace it.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna be in, it's going to be multiple hundred thousand dollars to fix that.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then fix the abutment with the crack in it.
Yeah, probably about six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand to replace the whole thing. Estimate.
Wait, we're talking three quarters of a million just to do the abutments and to do what?
No, that would be the full replacement of the structure.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, then I misheard what you just said. Do we have a cost estimate to not do the full replacement?
Uh, we haven't put one of those together yet.
Not together yet, because the theory is if the bridge is built in the thirties, the stress pan. So if we make. If it's three hundred thousand dollars for everything except for that truss, and we only get another five or ten years out of it. What did we gain by not spending the money to do it now? And it may be something that we can apply for one of the local bridge programs to get a cost sharing.
Yeah, the truss, the truss was built in nineteen thirty five. It's got some pack rust and some rusting. So it's, it's hard to say how many more years we have of that truss, so, you know. Say it costs two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand to replace the beams, replace all the deck, guardrail, all that stuff. Maybe we just pay that much again and get a bridge that lasts for a hundred years. Is what we were kinda throwing around.
Where is that again? Kyle and where?
It's west of Sylvan.
Just about on the county line. West of Sylvan.
Yeah, what, what, is that like twentieth or west, or twentieth or tenth or?
It's sixty five. If you take twentieth over.
It's about the Lucas, Lucas.
That's the Crooked Bridge?
That's that Crooked Bridge.
The one that goes over Wolf Creek that's a hundred and forty feet.
Oh, okay. I know where it is, yeah. Thanks, yeah.
But what determines the lifespan that you're talking about that could potentially be five years?
If that rust is damaged further, it's, it's steel from nineteen thirty five.
But the age of it doesn't matter. It matters the, what shape it's in, so who's looked at it?
We have.
We have.
You can determine if that steel is a.
Yeah, it's hardened.
Hardened where it might break the track.
What is five years? I'd, I'd like a little better description.
I mean, it, it could go, it could last another hundred years, it could last ten years. It, what they go, they go. There, there's.
There's not a way to determine that?
Yeah, it's.
I can't accept that. Ten years and a hundred years is a huge difference, and if, if you're not truly worried about it in the next five years, which would mean there's severe damage to it. Then I don't see why you'd spend triple the money when you're looking at, you know, maybe you're looking at a twenty five year investment, I'm not sure. But what do you get by rust? Like rust that scratches off, or it's rusted through with holes?
Yeah, it's like, it's pack rust, so there's some plates that are together, so you've got some rust in between those plates. Um, and then just in general, I think it's got some moderate rusting along the whole structure. Uh, but there was a fracture critical bridge inspection that was performed. Um, I don't have that with me today, Bren, actually Brennan's got it, maybe. What we're trying to say is, you know, a new structure will probably cost twice as much, and you get a new structure. The old structure, we're gonna rehab it, so you're still gonna have an old truss, I guess. Um, the old structure, we're gonna rehab it. So you're still gonna have an old trust, I guess. But you're gonna have new, new superstructure on each of the approaches.
Yeah, Howard got.
Is that gonna be in the same location or to be moved one way or the other on the grid?
No, it'll be uh, the same location. Reusing the piers and the abutments. Now, if if we build a new structure, you could potentially change the line it. But if we just rehab the existing structure, it'll stay exactly the same.
That's talking years out because you had put in like we did for that other bridge, grant money, right? But. And the state or the federal.
Yeah, so we looked at.
Federal program?
Off system one twelve got selected for the off system bridge program. This one, um. I I think we chose not to apply because it wasn't quite bad enough. Um, it is fracture critical being the trust. Uh, but the sufficiency rating was like high thirties and I think one twelve was like twenties.
So they go based on a rate ranking of how severe it is to.
Yeah.
To crap break in or crash or whatever.
Off system bridge program is competitive. So every county usually applies for a structure. Um, and then the worst ones, the states got eight million dollars that they allot. And then the worst ones usually get selected. So they've got kind of like a selection criteria.
Right.
Um, so this structure, we didn't quite think was.
You didn't think you'd probably get grant money for it, huh? Cause it's not quite that bad, huh?
It's bad, but it's not.
It's not.
Not quite as bad as this other one.
Bad as some of them, huh?
Right.
Okay. Alright, well, any other questions on this bridge Alexis?
Well, I mean, I'm biased. This is my district and this is probably the most important bridge that needs attention right now in my district. So. Um, you know, we've already started looking at some of the stone arch bridges that I mentioned in my district. So I didn't.
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of bridges in all the districts that could be fixed. And there is that one over here, that one nearby the Rocky Hill Road. That's the one we are doing.
I'm just not satisfied with the answer that this one particular portion of the structure is what everything hinges on. And it could be anywhere from ten to a hundred years. That doesn't make sense to me.
She's wanting to know if there they're a better way to evaluate that steel or that iron or whatever it is that's rusting. Can you tell us that it's good for ten years or twenty or forty? You can. You don't think you can.
On the leather.
Cannot predict the travel of rust through steel.
Can you drill into it and see if it's solid?
I can extrapolate from a business I used to be in for twenty years. And we would take steel vaults and the people that manufacture the steel vaults will not give you within a hundred years. The estimate of the time it's gonna rust through that steel vault. You absolutely can't do it. There's so many variable conditions. Particularly on a bridge like that because in addition to the wet and dry and and expansion, all that stuff and rusting the joints, you're also gonna have salt problems. And when you salt the road, you're on salt the bridge whether you want to or not, cause it'll drip off of the truck. So if a guy goes down eighteen when it's solid and for some reason or other zips over and goes down that road, he's gonna put salt on. Not a much, but we don't know how much he's gonna put on. So we can't predict the rust. So. You can't really say five or ten or twenty years. It's a craps.
Yeah.
It's like on that, you when you're talking about that rust, can't you scale the rust and see how thick you are yet on your on your beams, on your iron? And get a better idea of where you're at.
When you scale the rust off, then you have exposed bare steel again.
You don't have to do it in a big area. You can do it in a small area and see how much rust scale you actually have. Cause the thickness of the original iron.
You're gonna have to get a metal metallurgist to come out and do that metal or just.
Okay, I have to interrupt here. Kirkman Michael has been doing bridge inspections on nearly all of our bridges for the last several years. So let's say we went ahead and did a partial reconstruction on this. How would the company then come and reevaluate this situation using that same beam with that same rust? Because you're basically telling me that all of your bridge inspections are worthless. Because if there's any rust, you can't determine any.
What he's saying is it still rates out for this, but we would invest three potentially three hundred thousand dollars.
And we're still gonna have.
We're still gonna have in the future, the cheapest point to do it is to fix it right now. So we spend this three hundred thousand, just as a number, to buy fifty years on the approaches. This and then this tim, this this trust in the center that then it only has a life of ten years. So now I've waited ten more years to spend that investment to get that bridge up to par. So I've I've already spent three hundred thousand in it. We should spend it again, but it's gonna be costing more because now it's ten years in the future. Your cost did not get cheaper. Labor costs do not get cheaper. Everything, every cost, the cheapest time to do it is to do it right the first time. So doing a partial repair right now, it would cost us more in the future.
We're just trying to make you, you know.
You're deciding.
If if we go and rehab it, replace the approaches, we're still gonna have an old trust. So just want to let you make your work. If you guys choose to do that.
It would be cheaper, but you're gonna have an old trust.
I guess I'm just not understanding. I'm not negating what Kirkman Michael has done, but if this is the. If this is an indeterminate thing, then that applies to every single bridge. So how are you giving sufficiency rating?
Uh, the sufficiency ratings calculated from a number of things.
So the question is, what is that particular beam indicating indicating in the sufficiency rating? It should have its own portion of the formula to which then you can change the sufficiency rating by what improvements we make or don't make.
So the sufficiency ratings actually calculated by K-dots, the web portal. Uh, we just entered the ratings in and it automatically counts it. So ADT's involved, the condition ratings.
There's an equation.
Yeah, so there's a big long equation. I don't know.
You probably get the best values and equation computes it.
Yeah, yeah.
But what you're still telling me is that you can't determine the sufficiency rating of this particular portion of the bridge. So how can you do it for the whole thing? Whether it has a new decking, old decking, yada, yada. You're basically saying the rust is an indeterminate factor. And that could be for any bridge then?
Yeah, so those, so the superstructure would be the trust. And you have a rating factor based off of K-dots. I guess they have a manual. Um, and you would choose that rating factor based off how much rust, um, that kind of stuff. And then I guess that's one of the factors too.
Well, in a way I agree with Alexis here. You think you could have have a determined every, there's gonna be rust in all this stuff. On all this old iron steel bridges, right? So you'd think you could have a rating says you could determine, well, this has. That much rust, so it's not that bad. This is, in other words, different degrees of rust and that could tell you severity. And that's what Alexis is asking. I agree with her there. You can't tell the severity because you really don't know how bad the rust is, right?
Yeah.
Or how good the rivets are that were put in nineteen thirty-five, the condition of them.
What the deal is, is your bridge is gonna be good for twenty-seven tons if you fix it for the next few years. Few is an indeterminate number. So you have to decide or we have to decide, make a value judgment. On whether or not it's worth doubling the money, putting a new bridge in or.
Yeah.
Spending half of the money and go with what.
And then it could take all legal loads. So this one is restricted by the SU seven truck, the special unit truck, seven axles. I don't know if people out there would have seven axles, but certain emergency vehicles. Even updating that may not be able to travel across. So that's what that SU seven generally is.
Well, we got a question, Dr. Sharon.
Um, well, I was wondering now like say if they put all this new on there and then your trust fails. Do they have to take all the new off to fix the trust?
So.
It's a good question.
So span one and two are the old timber. So if we rehab those or replace those with steel I-beams. And then span three is the trust. So span three failed. Yeah, it's a good question. It just depends what all failed.
Well, it sounds like we don't have all the answers today.
Like if if span three failed and just span three failed, could you come in and put some bigger beams or something in there? We'd have to look at.
These are a lot of what ifs.
Yeah, after.
We can't.
That's a good line of questioning. Don't let that drop. That's exactly what we need to know. If we're going to invest the money for just the partial fix. Then we wanna know if this rusted beam actually fails. Can we still utilize everything we've already purchased and just replace the beam at that time in the future?
It all depends what fails. So if the trust has just failed.
If it crap, if it broke in and damaged things.
And then like if it damages the piers.
Right.
Uh, if if only the trust fails, um, and the piers are fine and everything, then.
You wouldn't know.
You might be able to.
Depending on what happened.
Right. So it's it's hard to say.
Trouble would be getting a crane in to move it with the creek bit to put in the new pieces.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're gonna decide much tonight on this issue.
Not at all. Sorry I brought it up.
Well, that's a, so uh, we'll discuss it later. Uh, you may wanna try to. But you try to get a little more input like the question Sharon asked. It's, you know, if we could. If it failed, if we could, what we fixed, if we did fix it that way, you know, if that would be usable. It'd be, there's probably different situations like you said, though.
I do appreciate you following up on this particular bridge.
Yeah. Okay, you guys, uh, anything else Tanner?
Um, I think everything can kinda wait till next month.
Okay.
Yeah, Brendan and I had some good conversations today, so.
Uh, any more news on the wind towers, uh, repower?
Yes, so uh, Jeremy Price with Anell, um, called Brendan and I both. Um, we took the old RMA and added some language. Um, and we've sent it to them and then the county attorney. Um, and they're reviewing it. Um, and then I'm sure they're gonna probably have some comments and some of our revisions. Um, and we plan on, you know, working through those. I think on, I did tell him, I was like, it'd be nice. I think there's some questions. It'd be nice if they came here and gave a presentation and told what's gonna get replaced as far as drive trains and the cells.
That'd be great. You could ask him to do that.
Yeah, so he he actually just emailed me today and was thinking maybe January thirteenth.
I'd say he got on the agenda.
Okay.
So January thirteenth.
Oh, good.
I don't remember.
Because a lot of people are asking me about what's going on with that stuff. And I said, well, you're working on it. You guys were. I had to, what what, any guess when they're actually gonna start work out there timeframe wise?
Oh, I think they have have to have it done by end of twenty twenty. I think they're getting.
This year or next or next?
Yeah, next year.
We're almost next year.
I think there's, they have to have it done so they can qualify. I think the tax credits are coming up. This is me. I think this is what he was.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, keep us posted on that.
So I think they're maybe gonna start summer or spring. We can ask him that on the thirteenth.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
He would know more about it since he's actually managing it.
Alright, anything else?
So I, I think that's all for me for this time.
Alright, Brendan?
Yeah, I had a couple like they just, he's got, he's all the way back to Lindsburg tonight, so.
Well, we were wanting to talk about like we, we'll just go back to the uh. The uh, the budget, yeah, and what we may.
So about two weeks back, I came in with our budget as of that date. I don't remember if you still have the sheets or not on that. Where we had what was sent out, will we expand on everything?
Somewhere.
Okay. So that's I, that's what I thought you were needing for me. I wasn't aware of it more, so I apologize for not having that freed on.
Well, yeah, I. I don't know if we're gonna, we're gonna need that or if we don't do any carryover, right? If we don't do anything, there won't be any.
There won't, the the, if you don't do any carrier, or deminiment in the carryover for my county department. The money that was not used for chip sealing this year, I will not have that available for future. Equipment that was, should have been purchased this year before I was brought in. That money will be gone for that equipment that needed to be purchased. Just it wasn't, I don't know the reasoning why, but it was, wasn't done before I came in. So I I recommend keeping them, that money around because that money should have been spent this year, but it just, it wasn't.
Well, we.
There is, there's, there's things going on, yes. So it, I mean, if you, it's your decision to decide or not.
You don't have those numbers anymore, do you?
No, I didn't bring them with me today because I, when we talked to them then, I thought that was it. Get on it, that we were needing. So I do not have those in front of me now. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Alexis, do you have any input with that?
Well, I really don't think that we should um, transfer nothing. That that doesn't help our cause because we still have more purchases to make that we've talked about for replacing equipment. And that is what what Mr. McKay just said. It's money that was budgeted for this year. That we did not spend purposefully for one reason or another. So really it allows us to have more spending power next year. For what we wanna do in that department. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to increase the budgets.
No, that like in twenty twenty-one's budget, just because I had five hundred thousand, next year in capital outlay to expend on equipment. Twenty twenty-one, I I'm not, I'm not going to come in and say, well, I spent five hundred thousand, I want five hundred thousand again. That's not. I mean, my budget for twenty twenty, it was already set before I came in here. I'm gonna work with whatever budget you give me. It's just I feel those expenses that should have been spent this year that weren't for one reason or another. If we don't keep those funds around for following years, it's gonna put that much more stuff behind. It just, they, the roads didn't get chip sealed. Not that they didn't need it, just with personnel and timing, it couldn't be done. And they made an investment. I've got material in the north lot. Some of it can be reused for patching, some, but also it's now a waste of material. The most expensive is purchased and then not used. And it it's not, it doesn't do, it ain't good just sitting out like that.
Yeah.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are way over budget with gravel purchase. And that is partially because we doubled the price we were paying out. We did not. Um, sufficiently increase the budget line item for expense. And this has nothing to do with you because this is what we did for last year coming into this year. So I really think your budget is probably going to be heavily manipulated between how it was spent this year and then what's gonna be happening in twenty twenty. And that gives us a little bit of leeway to move some of those numbers around, along with purchasing and replacing equipment.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll have to increase your budget, gravel budget probably. Do you have a number, Alexis, if you would like to make on a resolution for a.
Yeah, I don't because I, well, I guess I could look at our last reports. When did we get our last reports sent out?
Oh, a couple weeks ago.
That spreadsheet that I showed you has the last information. So.
Okay.
So that's the bit that I emailed you guys.
Yeah.
For road and bridge.
Alright, I got it here in my email.
Had a cash balance on December eleventh of one million twenty-one thousand. I have taken out all of the expenses for the month of December in payroll of a hundred ninety-three thousand. So it leaves us cash balance of eight hundred twenty-seven thousand three seventy-three forty. He's required to carry over a twenty twenty balance of one ninety-three thousand, or one hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars. Which leaves us six hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. With the amended budget, he has six hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars remaining. So again, I use the lower number. So he has six hundred and thirty-three thousand. Last year, prior year expense was thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. So you're looking at at least somewhere around six hundred thousand to be on the conservative side. If past history repeats itself. If it does not, then that's a.
Right. And I see on your email, you said you could save the estimate five hundred seventy-five thousand. But but then you didn't know what he had spent, right?
I I don't know.
Yeah, the only expenses that I haven't been accounted for was six hundred, six hundred.
Eleven thousand.
Yeah, eleven thousand for repairs for what's already been started this month. And then six hundred and thirty-three dollars, I believe, was what it was for the laser level equipment from. So why not?
And how, and what are we doing about the billing, the fuel billing?
So Next Tech or Next Tech, we've been in contact with them. When I came on, I was told by them, everything was all done. Nothing had been done. Precision Electric hadn't been contacted, Run Power out there. That when I talked to them in October is the first time they had ever been out there and been contacted. So then I talked with our IT person from Next Tech. He gave me a number for someone from Next Tech that was supposed to be getting in touch with me. This was back in early October. I've called just about every week and left voicemail. I've gotten nothing from them. Like maybe because they heard we are not gonna be renewing our contract with them. I don't know. So Wilson Communications, they've offered to do it. I wasn't aware that this was that big of an issue because it was never talked about until December twenty-fourth was when I got a call. The purse office that we haven't done this. When I spoke with the commission previous week, before that, when we accepted the contract, they're gonna be coming out on January second to. Install the equipment that needs to be out there so we can connect with our fuel server to get it out.
Okay, so I think what we just need to know is what do you think is owed to the highway department for fuel?
I honestly can't tell you, cause it was, we did it for two months when I came in here and I don't know if.
Like, two or three months.
Yeah, it was two, two months.
And that's the, uh, sheriff's department?
Sheriff's Department, fire, anyone else that uses our fuel system up there.
Let's see, I'm concerned over the whole deal, cause that appears to me, we lost total accountability to fuel. We have no idea.
Correct.
We could be filling his pickup, half of the farmer's pickups around here.
Well, no, no, it's not like that. They have to use the key.
I understand what you say, you gotta have a key and a password.
Yes.
But you have no security on any of that stuff, and I am concerned and have been gravely concerned from the start. At least we could be taking pen and pencil and writing down what they get and all that stuff.
So my, yeah, my employees on their timesheets write down the fuel they use from there and from their barrels.
We haven't consolidated that into.
Because that's just my employees, that's not the sheriff's department, fire department EMS. They don't write that down, they just use their.
Which is all the more reason for me to express my concern that this should have been fixed back in October.
It should have been fixed this summer.
Next Tech's desk for two months.
Yeah.
And been down at Wilson, talking to Wilson Communication, having them up here first thing Tuesday or the second. This is of grave concern to me. It's a total loss of accountability out there.
I agree. And I can't, I can't, I can't get any employees, I cannot code any new employees.
Do you think the sheriff, like, there's, the sheriff's department gets fuel, do you think they have any idea how much they've gotten?
I, I don't know.
Like, when they go fill up their car, do they get a, it doesn't give them no ticket or nothing?
Nope, they plug their key in, they type in their number.
And they just roll?
And then, and then they type in what pump they want and their odometer mileage, and then it prints out. The system's not right, cause like, when I looked before we disconnected the system, I had negative sixty thousand gallons of diesel fuel. The system, it should be able to read it correctly. I don't, I shouldn't have to go out there, unlock the door to the building and look at that meter and be able to tell how much fuel I have in each thing.
Yeah.
That system, when you dialed in, should be right. I was negative sixty thousand gallons of diesel fuel, negative eighty thousand gallons of unleaded. So inventory was never kept right ever since its installation.
I have a question.
Be of concern to me.
And that's what, when we talked with Caleb, as we got into this new system.
Financial issue right there.
Well, we need to get it fixed. Alexis has a question.
Question about this, though. I, I'm still not understanding. Is it that you don't have access to see, to retrieve the information? Or the information is not even logged?
We don't have informa, we don't have access to see the information. It's on the computer in there. Originally, we dialed into it. When we changed courthouse and everyone changed from going to AT&T to Next Tech or Wilson. So ours was a dial-up modem out there through AT&T. So when they're cutting AT&T phone lines, that means no connection to that box. Next Tech could come out and install internet out there. Someone, I was told someone else had run power out to that box so they can plug in a wireless AP unit. So they, they can communicate, because running the hardline through the existing conduit, it's sealed off because you're in a gas area. You have to have those sealed per codes, so you don't get gas buildup from the building. So there was no way to rerun a wire through the conduit. So options were go with wireless AP units or trench the concrete where all the gas lines are. No one apparently wanted to trench the gas lines, so they had gone ahead and purchased a ethernet port, which it would need regardless of which system you went with. That was done before me. The power was supposed to be installed and the AP units were supposed to be, I don't know.
Let's back up just a little bit, because you were the one that wanted to trench the concrete. I specifically sent Jade out from Next Tech to look and meet with you out there, and you didn't show up. And Jade called and said, nobody's here, and then I think the second time Jade come out, he met with you and you decided you wanted to trench the concrete. Then you decided not to trench the concrete. So you can blame, I, I get tired of blaming businesses.
It's, it's me.
Yeah, I hate blaming businesses that we're giving Next Tech a bad name here when it wasn't Next Tech. It is our failure, our failure all along. When you started, I told you, Precision Electric was supposed to be installing a power cable. And Next Tech needed to install something to communicate. You said, I've got it taken care of. I know what it is that I need. And we even told you where the little card was at, the phone connection guy come up. So like, let's just stop blaming everybody and let's just fix it.
I should have gotten this fixed beforehand. That's my fault.
Well, for, we need to for now, and so we need to deal with that quicker.
He's coming out here January second to install it.
Okay.
Or possibly tomorrow, when he talked to Caleb today.
New Year's Eve tomorrow, probably not, nothing going on probably. But, yeah, well, we need to get it fixed, obviously, and Jim's got a good concern, I do too. Cause who knows getting, what getting fuel out there and, and I'm sorry, but, uh, I, we hopefully trust our employees. But if somebody has a key and a, like you said.
If they have a key, they can plug it in.
They can fix, put in their first.
Well, they could do it right now, even if we have access to it.
Yeah, I know.
Cause I don't have cameras out there to see. I just have, they type in their number and they, mileage.
Right, we're trusting.
They can fill it up themselves.
We're trusting the employees.
Whether I can see it or not right now, it, even when I can see those numbers, people could still be putting their, in their personal vehicle, just using their key and their number.
Well, that, we need to get that fixed, you know. Anyway. But back to, uh, your, uh, back to this carryover. Don did email us about. We should probably do like, like you were saying, uh, we need to send, like we did before with these other resolutions.
Do you wanna split it evenly? Do you want to put? What's the dollar amounts you'd like to go into? It's not about special.
Well, you recommended here's five hundred seventy five thousand.
A total, and then you can choose the four funds you want it to go into.
Four, four of his funds, the highway department funds. What, what would funds would you need it most in, you know?
The special road would be, you had a hundred and sixty thousand before we paid Mr. Brandon out of that fund to do Wilson Lake repairs.
Okay.
I would recommend that go back into the rid, the road portion, the special road.
How much?
It was a hundred and sixty thousand before we paid out the repairs for Wilson Lake Estates.
Well, that was like fifty five or sixty five.
Fifty five and then there are eighty five hundred for seating.
Seated, okay.
I don't think we've paid for seating yet.
Okay, we didn't.
Not yet. Well, we, we authorized it, that does a bean.
We didn't, it's already been seated.
I, I don't show us having that much money coming out.
Oh, he hasn't billed us yet.
He hasn't billed us from there.
Okay, well, there's another outstanding bill then.
Correct.
That's another eight grand, so.
It was at a hundred and sixty before the repairs were put out there.
Well, I'm just considering.
Recommend carrying that over to use that in the special road, so that way it can be reused for chip sealing next year.
So I, I, I'm gonna make a motion here, do the fun.
Hang on one second.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I don't think Branda came out of that fund. Because I don't show that either of those, none, none of those funds had a hundred and sixty thousand in it. Your special highway improvement fund had a hundred and sixty eight thousand, but that was the bridge fund.
Pulled it out of the chip sealing budget from the actual year, not any of the special funds.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying that chip sealing budget, my twenty nineteen chip sealing budget, was at a hundred and sixty thousand, we paid fifty five and some change. From that for Mr. Brandon's repairs.
Okay, you were saying special fund.
I, to move, to move that, to move that hundred and sixty to the special road.
Got it.
So which, uh, what, what are the four cows here, remind me?
Your options are special county road.
Special.
Special machinery. Special road improvement, that is the fund that we used to have for a building that we used and put in the fuels.
For the, for the landslide?
No, that, that was to build a new building out where the fuel tanks.
Oh, new building, okay.
But we used it for the fuel tanks. And a special highway improvement fund, and that's the money where we're putting that cost share. Of this bridge, state bridge funds in. So they do a project, we submit the project, and it's normally the chip sealing project to bring it in, and that's our money for bridges. So that's where any repair bridge.
So that's the federal fund exchange that we filled, that I filled out and submitted back in September for us.
So if we do five hundred seventy five thousand, which is kind of, Don stayed here, and I think that's a good number, in my opinion. Uh, out of, as a resolution to do that, where would you wanna, how, what breakdown would you like out of these four funds?
A hundred and sixty thousand to the special road, the first one.
Special road, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
To special county road.
And then we got five seventy five, so, uh.
That gets us down to four fifteen.
Yeah, and then where, what else you want then?
I would put three hundred into equipment, special equipment, special machinery.
Machinery three hundred, okay. That's a, that's four sixty.
Yep, so the remainder of the one fifteen, I would put into the special highway improvement, the one that we use for our bridge cost share. That we put our cost sharing into for our bridges.
Highway improvement.
Correct.
One sixty?
Yes, the, the one fifteen, that would be.
One five.
One, one five, I'm sorry.
Is that where you think he would take the tug pointing from?
Yes.
That we're getting ready to bid on?
Correct, the tug pointing, this cost sharing that we have for this KLDIP program here.
So nothing in road improvement?
No, that's where they put the money for building a building up there.
Okay, okay.
And we, I think the counties are decided that they're not putting it, moving it out.
Have you heard that? Well, Alexis, do you have any?
And Brandon and Labie come out of the special road, special county road.
Brandon already came out. Labie would come out of prior year expenses, but that, that would be coming out of our, where our chip ceiling was at, that was what the county commission decided. We paid for it.
Think we'd have more than enough to cover that.
Alexis, do you have any, uh?
I have a question for Don. Don, isn't the special bridge the one that you can only levy the two mills and put into?
Yes, and that one isn't getting any money put into.
Okay, so, okay, so that sounds fine.
We use the special highway.
Five seventy five is good.
It would be basically going into fund thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen. Your special bridge fund is fund twelve.
Well, okay.
Black resolution.
I don't have a problem with what was discussed.
Can I do the resolutions and then I'll bring them back down? Okay. Is that dollar amount okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's go over it again one more time, special for, special road, a hundred and sixty thousand, right? Machinery, three hundred thousand, uh, road improvement, a hundred and fifteen thousand, right? Those three things?
I have to find the third resolution before we do this. You guys can go on with business.
Okay. Is it Alexis, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Those three things, I agree, we should transfer that over there. We need to fix those projects. We have that carryover. Okay, well, go on then for now. What else Brendan, you got? Anything?
Uh, Russell County, was there a date that you want me to set up to meet with them, the commissioners out there?
Commissioners out there, that's the, that's the, where at, that's the landslide area?
We can meet out at Wilson Lake or it can be up to the commission, and then here's this, we'll talk about it more next Monday. For any changes you want made to the proposals. I basically, I, I cleaned up the language and the spelling errors that I had found in the original agreement. That have been going on, and basically put in, it, it said removing snow debris from their area. So basically, it wasn't clear if, if there's a storm that comes through, a house lands on the roadway, well, according to our agreement, we wouldn't. It didn't stipulate who was actually responsible for it. So I basically, I cleaned up the language of it and explained things out more in depth and then.
Does this include the roads, those, what's that, one point seven miles?
Correct. Yeah, this, so basically, this explains more. Then that we're responsible for X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
And then there's those numbers in there that stipulate what X, Y, and Z are.
Okay.
And then.
And then original plat map, them roads, that's what's key.
Basically, that's what we're doing, yeah.
Because once, like Steve there, he's mail carrier right there, and Leanna wants to know for sure exactly what we're gonna approve. That way then you guys can give the postmaster, or the big guys in the post office, to know the authorized you guys to deliver mail there. Yeah, so he needs to know that too, for sure. So, okay. Now, there are some roads that Steve, you deliver on that east side of the highway.
Private roads.
Those are private though, that ain't county. Okay, that's.
It's in Russell County, but they're not.
I can't believe that's in Russell County, that's east of the highway.
Yep, that is Russell County. There's one house that's Lincoln County and Lincoln County.
Maybe I guess that whole thing.
They wanted, yeah, they wanted to connect the road to Russell County's road over there, but Lincoln County, I guess at times said no. So they have a very long private driveway from Lincoln County side to their home.
Well, that's fine. I just, Steve and Leanna wanted to know, because based on what we do here or approve.
Yep.
Then that may affect their mail service out there. All right.
Christmas Day, we believe.
We'll review this to talk, look about it later.
Either Christmas Day or sometime overnight, the morning on the twenty sixth, we had one of our Stone Arch culverts, bridges. That was damaged by an accident. Someone had hit the banister and the banister on that is completely in the ditch.
Where's that at?
Hunter and Teal.
Well?
Hunter and Teal.
Al Boland's Petersons.
Oh.
So when I spoke with Dustin, sheriff's office Friday, he was aware, he had seen the incident, taking pictures and.
Was it damaged real bad? Oh.
Yeah, I tried to print out pictures, but I could not. My printer would not work when I, I came back to the office at six thirty to try and get them out, and I couldn't get the pictures. I have them here on the phone if you'd like to see.
Ah, well, I don't need to.
And, but I will bring them next Monday, the pictures.
That's fine. Yeah, we're, we're gonna.
The gentleman who, who, they're in the hospitals, to my knowledge still, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they were transferred to Wichita Friday.
Wow, okay.
They didn't know whether it was a pre-existing medical condition or not, so that's.
Yep. Just, I wanted you to be aware that that was.
Okay.
The bridge usable now.
It's fine, the bridge is usable, but the banister is off. So I didn't know if the commission wants us to pull the bricks out and re-mortar them ourselves? Or how you want us to handle that for now?
You got the capability to fix it?
We can stack, at least stack it back up. It's, it was done by the public's work program, looking at the stones and how they were manufactured out there. It's not like, some of the stone culverts, they don't have precision, the keystones are just the keystone. This is an artistically designed keystone, which I found similar on like, the Stone Arch in Denmark. Where Public Works Program has stamped Public Works. Looking at the size and the scope of this and just how the stones were cut. It probably, it, it's a bit, it's a, it's in good shape, it's been rehabbed probably in the last twenty years with, they put an inner steel arch. I think we could, we could at least stack the rocks back up as a banister and then if the commission decides we want to re-ground it ourselves, we can.
Yeah, you might as well do it, if you're gonna do it, re-ground it as you stack, rather than just stack it up, you could put some kind of a temporary.
With the temperature right, with the temperature right now, it wouldn't.
But can't you put some kind of a temporary thing up there, if it's not that heavily traveled?
No.
Cause you can't go anywhere on that damn road. So, I, I'd do signage and what you need for the minimum safety then, when the weather gets better. If you got the capability to fix it. Let's go through, fix it.
And then, the, mostly other stuff, I did reach out to Mr. Bell, Mr. Waikie, spoke to them last week. So Mr. Bell, he is, he's getting a tank car from Wichita that he's willing to donate to put in there for that bridge.
Okay.
He believes the tank car, when he gets it, he's gonna let us know, so we get actual measurements. Make sure that pipe can withstand it.
Good.
So Tanner had actually looked at it before.
You think that'll work fine?
So, one, with a, with an eight foot pipe, when you looked at it, it would hold a two-year storm, with two eight-foot pipes. It's a, has a four, four years, four-year storm, and currently it is rated for a ten-year storm, or was it?
I think it's a little over a five.
Okay, rated for a five-year storm.
Just for running some quick hydraulics, I think we did those a year, year and a half ago.
So with the ten-foot pipe, I recommend sheeting it with concrete, because we know it will overtop at some point.
Sure.
So that way, just for future ease of maintenance, topping it, making it similar to like what you would find in a vented Ford. We would have cleanup from buildup in the stream, but we would not lose our road surface during heavy storms. It would just, the water would go over it, water would recede, it'd be driving surface again.
That's okay.
It's a bit more costly, but for, you do it right the first time, it's the cheapest, it's never gonna be.
No, that's fine.
And it's not gonna be overly expensive. If he's providing that tank car, that's less than we would, that's even less we pay. We'd still put headwall colors on it, drive sheet piling, what we can do with our equipment.
Sounds good, I'm glad you're working, working with.
And then Dan, I talked with him a bit about the road that we had looked at back when I first started.
Dirt road.
The dirt road that gets in, inundate with water, and how we would need to clean out the culvert there. And if he would be willing to donate material from a nearby area to help build that up. I'm gonna meet with him in the future on it, out there, so we can discuss it.
Sure.
See.
We're good.
Put our eyes on it, and then he talked about the drainage on two eightieth and Elk, where the blacktop ends.
Yeah.
So I looked at that again, believe we can, that it needs some ditch work, the ditches need cleaned out.
Okay.
When we go to do that, I'm putting it on our list, we do the one call, we'll get that fiber line located. Because it go, it's going through blacktop, I would assume they directionally board it, so that line should not be in the area where we, we would be. Where we would disturb it by cleaning up the ditches, which would help the drainage area quite a bit. He had suggested moving it further back in the field so it can drain properly. Looking at it right away out there, it's not something we can do without, within our own right of way.
Okay. Well, good, thanks for talking to him, Brendan.
And the other stuff that I have, it can wait till.
Yeah.
Next week.
Okay.
Little things, improvements that I feel we should do for our north lot.
Okay.
We have a, we have a material on hand that we would be using with, so it's basically a winter project for when we can't be on our roadways, cause they're too wet. So, keep my employees being productive.
They're all coinciding, sorry.
This is, which is original, doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter, whichever one's willing to give up.
Uh, back to resolution, twenty nineteen dash eighteen, transfer of funds, uh, from the road fund twenty nineteen. Uh, budgeted funds into the special county road fund. I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Well, there's three of them here, one for each amount of money.
Oh, okay.
But.
Uh, you have. Uh, you have.
There's one for, what, three hundred thousand, one for, one for a hundred fifteen, and one for, uh?
Uh, I make a motion, I'll correct my motion, to approve all three funds, because they total out to the five seventy-five, as previously we designated. At a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and three hundred thousand.
I'll second it. Motion been made and seconded to approve these three resolutions. Twenty nineteen, dash nineteen, dash twenty, dash eighteen. One for a hundred sixty thousand, one for a hundred fifteen, one for three hundred thousand, for these three funds we previously discussed. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, not opposed.
Sign away, that's, you have.
Okay.
Three sets of originals there.
Anything else you need from Tanner? You got an hour drive to get home?
Go.
No, well, yeah, if you wanna go, Tanner, yeah. Unless you wanna sit and listen to a wonderful discussion.
No, it's interesting.
I don't want your wife getting mad at us.
She'll be all right.
Might be, she didn't want him home, did you ever think of that?
They did decide to stay here for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Well, thank you for updating us, Tanner. Brendan, you have anything else?
I, my stuff can wait till next month.
Alexis, do you have anything else for Brendan or Tanner?
Nothing this time.
Okay.
Go do some study on ferric and ferric oxide.
All right, well, thanks, Brendan, you're done too then. We do have, uh, back to, we have a, uh. Tax abatement. Let you look at it.
There's actually two there, one's behind a clip, both of them are sale of watercrops.
Yeah, there's two out there.
Yep.
We have a two, a two tax abatements.
This is Crestliner sixteen boat.
Yeah.
For Gregory Paulusu Nichols.
Yeah. There's one tax abatement for, uh, Micah and Kayla Brown. For, uh. Fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents from a boat, watercraft. Glass-rup boat. And, uh, this other one was.
This one is, uh, the same sort of thing, it's for thirteen dollars and change.
Yeah. And another one from Greg Nichols, it's Paula Sue Nichols, sold an eighty-three Crestliner sixteen-foot boat. With a forty-horse motor, and, uh, getting.
It's at the very bottom.
Thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, there you go, yeah, uh, well, we'll do one at a time here, I guess. What, first tax abatement for control number. Two zero one nine one one. Tax abatement for the amount of, uh, fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve this tax. Any discussion, I'm sorry? If not, it's been, motion's been made and seconded to approve this tax abatement, two zero one nine one. Also, will you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, not opposed.
The commission.
Do we have to sign that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you can sign, bring it in.
Okay.
While he's signing, I'll make a motion that we approve the tax abatement for control number two zero one nine one two. For thirteen dollars and seventy-eight cents for Gregory Paulusu Nichols.
And I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded to approve, uh, tax abatement two zero one nine one two for. Thirteen dollars, seventy-eight cents. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, not opposed. Okay, now what do we got? We have, we got, Alexis, you got any eventually here someday?
Yes, I wanted to talk about the minutes.
Have you?
And I thought I had printed off the ambulance, we need to do an ambulance transfer as well, if you want to.
Okay.
Um, I thought I printed it off, but I had prepared one. Apparently, I forgot to hit print, um, for fifty thousand dollars. Yes, fifty thousand dollars.
An ambulance resolution.
Yes. It would transfer ambulance, fifty thousand dollars from their regular operating fund to their capital improvement fund. And I have that they would have a budget, fifty-six thousand, seven forty-two remaining, cash remaining of fifty-six thousand, nine twenty-six. And they had prior year expenditures of seventeen ninety-eighty-one, and we're just cool, cool, cool with all the bills that we've been receiving, so.
Good.
You just tell me what that means.
So, do we need to transfer, or are we good to go?
I would like to speak to that.
Okay.
We just had that bid for remounting the box, and so we'll, we will need money for that. And a lot of what we should have collected last year, we ended up kind of. Uh, just absorbing into the budget, so that is all coming back. I do believe we should transfer this one.
Okay.
The full fifty thousand, or, that would leave six thousand dollars to do prior year expenses.
And you said last year's was seventeen?
Was one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Oh, seventeen hundred?
Seventeen hundred.
So, maybe we double that, I don't know, I'm not sure what's been going on there with the billing process.
At, at fifty thousand dollars, it would leave about six thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars to spend.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know what to say, so.
Yeah.
Again, that would be the leftover to pay for this year's bills, and that would go into March, just like you told us before.
So, we know we have West Star, we know we have fuel. Other than that, I don't know what they have, you know, if they've ordered supplies.
Yeah.
When he was in the office, the one day, and we talked about it some more, he had said that we had all of the bills. And him and Hannah were talking about what she had entered and not entered. It would just be a matter of if they had to order something in between. Or if there was something ordered that he forgot about.
Let's move the fifty thousand, so we can pay for the ambulance repair.
Okay. I'm gonna print that resolution then.
Okay.
And I will.
I agree, it's fifty thousand too.
Go get it.
Yeah, I would rather see us transfer that now than go into a longer payment plan. On paying for the vehicle update.
Was Derry gonna check on land lease with the local banks?
Well, I don't know, we never really got to, he thought that that was an option, but we never really made a decision to have him pursue that.
Somebody ought to ask him though, wouldn't you think?
Well, maybe we should have him come back, and now that we're gonna do this fifty thousand transfer, he could use part of that, like Alexis just stated, to, uh, help pay for that.
Well, the more down payment we make, the less time we have to spend making payments, and the smaller the payments, so.
Right.
We don't need to be levying taxes to make payments on something that we can pay cash for, since we have to transfer now.
Right, I agree.
But if we can do a land lease with the local bank, then we keep some of that money here in the county, probably get a better rate.
Yeah, that guy.
No.
Yeah.
No, pay cash and get it over with.
A land lease, yeah, you don't wanna pay interest. She don't wanna pay interest. She's cash, I am too, I like cash too. Either way.
Let's open it up to some public comment while we're waiting on Dawn.
Yeah, we got public comments here, we'll start talking public stuff. You guys got anything to say?
Pay cash.
Pay cash, I agree. Then you don't have to borrow money and pay interest, right?
I don't have a credit card, I pay cash.
Hundred dollar bills, right? There you go. Got a lot of them, I'll bet.
I feel that it's unfair for the government to collect money and make interest on it, and then pay bank interest on money borrowed. That we're using taxpayer money to pay payments on.
No, I agree, I like cash too, Alexis. Now, if we could get a really good deal, land lease with zero interest, that'd be different. But I doubt we can get that.
If you ever sit down with that, most of the time, then it do not work. Because you're paying enough more upfront, it, it, Craig and I have done that down to shop several times, and most of the time, that, that's not the cheapest.
Yeah. All right, another, here we go. We'll do a resolution, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one here. Transfer of funds, be resolved this thirteenth day of December of two thousand nineteen, pursuant to KSA twelve dash one one zero D. To transfer fifty thousand dollars from the Lakin County Ambulance Service, two thousand nineteen budgeted funds. Into the Lakin County Ambulance Service Capital Outlay Fund, adopted by Lakin County. Kansas Board of Commissioners this thirtieth day of December of nineteen. Any more, any more discussion, Alexis? Or Jim?
I move we approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty-one.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried, not opposed. Oops, sorry, got it. All right, uh, I think we're done with those for now, unless there's more. Do we want to?
The minutes?
The minutes, yeah, let's go to the minutes.
I would like to address, I know this is superficial, but I think it's important. Um, under Highway Department, it says that Wally Sheldon moved barricades to travel across, across the closed road of North one fifty. And Gableman related that he had approved, and that the barricades will be reinstalled the same date. I guess I just don't really wanna see the word approved there, because unless we're gonna delegate responsibility to one particular member of the chair. You know, if, if Mr. Gableman gave individual permission to someone to do something on a public road. That's kind of a separate issue, it's not really the commission doing that, unless we have somehow designated him as the spokesperson. Or if we're gonna give special permission to the chairman at any certain time to make those kind of decisions. I mean, I don't feel comfortable telling any one of my constituents to move barricades, but if, if one of you do, that's something different.
We had agreed when we started this whole operation out there, that we would allow him one day's access to move his crops. And this was the one day that he chose to move his crops. He had not done that beforehand.
Well, I guess I didn't agree to that, because we never voted on it, and.
Yeah, we did, we did that out there on the, on the spot.
Option was for him to drive through his own field. I thought that's what was gonna happen.
I wasn't even sure if I was supposed to put it in, but he brought it up, and I don't know how close people watch the videos. I struggle sometimes with the video, because I, I don't know what I should put, what I shouldn't put. Sometimes I feel like I'm too worried, sometimes I feel like I'm not worried enough, so, you know, nobody's gonna hurt my feelings regardless of what we do. But Brendan had brought it up, and that's what happened, and so.
Right, this is not a criticism of your minutes, I just want some clarification there, that it says Gableman related that he approved. You know, basically, it's saying that one of the commissioners approved removal of the barricade. Well, I don't want that responsibility. I don't want it to look like someone can come to one particular commissioner and say, hey, you know, can I cross this closed bridge? And then we can give them permission or something. It's a liability to the county, and I, I would, I would. I don't know.
Well, I thought.
Do you want me to strike it?
Well, I thought at the time, several months ago, I remember Wally's wanting to do that, and we let it go across.
And both of you.
We went across.
Agreed to that, and I did not, so that's why.
But, but you know what, we changed that then, uh, Brendan, remember, he, he let him, he fixed up the ditches to make a driveway. He drove on his own land, and, uh, he didn't go across that bridge and move the barricades, but then now it's money, and now he's wanting to. And I didn't really agree with Jim either on this, I mean, I don't, I don't like to give a one, I wouldn't give authority for one, for somebody to do something. Without you guys approving it too. But it's over with now, we've done it, and I, I don't think we should unilaterally do that, though, in the future. Unless we have.
That's just what I'm trying to highlight, the word approved, just kind of, I mean, I guess I just, um.
Well, it's.
Can we strike approved and change it to the word discussed?
No.
It looks like.
It's a, it's a done deal.
Contacted and discussed the issue, but it was not a vote or an approval by the board, that's all I want clarified.
It doesn't say the board, it just says I did, so leave it alone, and then I'm at fault for that, but I wouldn't change it.
But you didn't actually approve anything, because you don't have authority to approve anything, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I did approve, whether I had the authority or not, I told him he could move the rocks and then put them back, so the, the statement is true. I did approve it, but I did not have the authority to approve it.
How about permitted?
Whatever you wanna write.
Well, that's, I think that's even worse, because then it actually, there is a permission. Okay, I just wanted to draw attention to it, because. It was something that I had pushed against when it first was brought up, to let one landowner do something the others were not permitted to do, so.
I mean, I can strike it all.
No, leave it in there, I think it ought to stay in there. We're gonna vote on it in a minute.
Okay, then down under adjourn, where it says, during the session, flew, moved to withdraw the motion. No second was made.
Yeah, I struggled with that, 'cause you did.
Yeah.
Kind of, but.
I, and I think technically, according to Robert's rules, you don't have to have a second. You do have to have approval for the withdrawal, so just say, just strike no second was made.
Okay.
And then, um.
Where's that at?
Uh, it's the page two of three, the very, second to last sentence, um, towards the end. So, no second was made is on the very last sentence.
Just strike no second was made, and then on the next sentence, James Gableman moved to table the motion. Because you, I think according to Robert's rules, you can do that. If someone moves withdrawal after the statement has been. After the chair has acknowledged the motion, you can withdraw the motion as the maker of the motion. But we never gave enough, we can never give a formal approval of the withdrawal, so we moved on to tabling the motion. So, we went, so James Gableman tabled the motion, motion to table the motion, and I seconded it, and that motion carried. And that was correct. Does that make sense, Dawn?
Okay, yes.
I just wanted to clean that up a little bit.
So, I'm gonna put moved to table. Uh, I, something's like happening, so we're gonna just.
Well, it's still on the next page, right?
Yeah, every time I highlight it, all of my side notes are highlighting as well. Yeah, I'll figure that out tomorrow. Okay, move to.
Table the original motion, because it wasn't a tabling of the withdrawal, it was a tabling of my original motion, so.
So, I'm gonna strive through. I'm striking through here, so that when I send it to the newspaper, and we'll see if it can get in. Um, they fix it, but then what I'm doing, when I'm emailing out minutes and saving them for record, is I'm making the changes.
Okay.
Cutting out the strike throughs, but just so you know, that's what I do. Okay, so I have.
Are you required subsequently to keep the strikes and all of the, the edits?
I don't know, Doris used to always. I was, but it just seemed like it drew the minutes out longer, that if, if.
Yeah, I think you should just change them and move on, 'cause I don't even think you're required to put down motions unless it's executive session.
Yes. I, I do the strike throughs, so that when I send to the newspaper, they can easily, and then I highlight what was struck through, so they can easily. Just change that part, because they already have it set, if that makes sense.
Preliminary.
Yeah. So, so I send that to the paper, but then I modify and make the changes for your guys' commissioners' journal and everybody else.
Yeah, okay.
So, I've got struck through, no second was made, and the struck through that rather than flew, withdraw her motion, that the board, and then I added to. Table the motion. So, it will read James Gableman moved to table, sorry, the original motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
That's all I had.
All right, are you ready to approve them?
I moved to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as amended, all in favor? Motion's been made as second to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Not opposed. All right, now what do we got?
Well, we tabled the motion and we were instructed to email our comments on human resources and I sent you my copy. Both of you did that.
Yeah, I, I got yours. I haven't emailed it any yet. I was reading it, thinking, I like what, I like the last one. Do you want?
Do we need to discuss this in the next meeting then?
Do you wanna discuss the?
I think we need to have a rather lengthy session about HR and I did send my email, but to Dawn only just for fear of serial communication about the HR position. So I did read your email, Mr. Gableman. I don't necessarily disagree with anything that you said. Um, I sent my, mine was more of a breakdown of duties. Dawn, did, did I cover mostly what you think needs to be in there?
I just scanned it briefly today, but yes, it looks like a lot of things was covered that I was thinking of. But I can't say I just thoroughly digested it because I had too many other things happening today that.
We could discuss this like.
I think we should discuss this later.
Yeah, you talked about wanting to get an ad out in the middle of the month, so maybe next week or, you know, the week after, we should really have an hour long session about it.
Okay.
Yeah, a major discussion so we can determine. We, we need to do something. It's just what, it's what, what we determine. I like your last one there. I think what we kinda discussed before, but we'll go over that next week.
Schedule us a meeting sometime. I had one more thing. Uh, it's another thing that we've been doing and I think I sent everybody an email on the county handbook. I had some thoughts and we probably need to get on that pretty soon, too.
So we had scheduled the sixteenth, or sorry, let me look at the right calendar. I think we had scheduled the thirteenth that you guys would have a works session and the twentieth, then you would have a session with department heads. And I may be off a week, but for the handbook.
What's the thirteenth for? Oh, handbook, yeah. Right, we talked about that. I can't remember the dates in there.
That's two meetings hence.
Yes.
Works fine.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Yep, just me.
Yes.
I will make sure it is on there, but I remember kind of doing that. I just can't remember which two days.
Okay. Well, we have some correspondence here we never discussed earlier.
I've got another thing I wanna do at the office, too.
Okay, well, okay, you, go ahead now, Jim.
I also sent an email to everybody and I'd like to present these marks formally and in the record. When one works for an employer, one is expected to perform their duties to the best of their abilities. The employee owes the employer total loyalty and job performance. In the old west parlance, that's called riding for the brand and that's what we expect. What is expected of every Lincoln County employee are these maxims. You may not do other county, other than county work while on the county line. This is in the handbook. You should not make or receive personal calls. That is in the handbook. Email and other electronic devices that belong to the county may not be used for other than county business or for pleasure. In the handbook. County offices are to be open and serving the public every working day. Management must schedule employee leave so that this can be done. Employees are required to be at their places of duty and productive for county work forty hours each week. Leave and medical problems will be taken into account by management. Leave, medical absence and overtime are clearly defined in the handbook. All employees should review their procedures and adhere to those handbook procedures strictly. Every Lincoln County employee should review the handbook now and vow to follow the procedures here diligently beginning right now. Violations of county principles cannot be and will not be tolerated in the future. We absolutely must stay on top of the money. All monies for budgeting has to be funneled through the county clerk and her duties by law, she is required to do that. It's not after the fact. It's got to be on time and before they're due. This is the law. Let's start all this right now and this has been presented to the county clerk for her inclusion in the minutes. That's read.
Any discussion on that Alexis? Did you hear it?
I did. I read the email too. I, it's excellent, really. I mean, there are a lot of things there that have needed to be said for quite a while and unfortunately.
The intent, I think the intent of this commission and everybody else should be a severe crackdown on personal business. Forty hours a week, productive work. This is all you would expect if somebody do their job. That's it. Just do your job. But this has been getting way too lax and out of hand and I think it's time that we settle it and settle it quickly.
Okay.
Should I pass the collection plate now for my sermon?
Well, we have some more correspondence here. Uh, we just got a letter from the state of Kansas. I just just stated that, uh, properties, Lincoln County Downtown Historic District. We are pleased to inform you that property is located at two sixteen Lincoln Avenue, which is here. And then one sixteenth North Second, one twenty-two West Court, one fourteen West Court are within the proposal in County Downtown Historic District and will be considered by the Kansas Historic Sites Board of Review for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places and the Register of Historic Kansas Places. At their next meeting, February second, twenty twenty. You're invited, but not required to attend this meeting, so forth and so on. So we got a letter.
As an adjunct to that, included in that is the red garage that is commonly known as the zinc garage at one thirty-four North Third Street.
Where's that?
Right across the road.
Oh, yeah.
Which happens to belong to me.
Oh.
Yeah.
By the window?
Yeah, next to the window. I'm unsure what the historical significance of that structure is, but if they want it, well, I care.
Then we got some little handouts here for leadership team building and coaching skills. Maybe we should take all that. And, uh, that's all of that. Well, again, from, from Mr. David Gersman, we got a printout from about Great Plains Health Alliance, some, uh, he had, I think did a cora report or coma.
Cora request. Cora request and that was the result of his.
Right, and this is some of the, he, he got some emails uh, between different people at the hospital and I don't think we would need to review it tonight unless you guys want to. I, I think it's something we'd look over later about hospital management and how they were operating. I'll just save that for next week or later, if that's all right. Alexis, do you wanna know anything more about that?
I think that might be a lengthy discussion. It, it could be next week.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of material here. It would take a long time to go through. Okay. Uh, I have no other correspondence or anything. Do you have anything Alexis or Jim or Dawn, anything else? All right, well.
Public questions or comment?
Public. You got any questions, comments, praise for us wonderful commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Gableman's comment that he wanted admitted to the record on the county employee. I'm also an EMT person. I have to have dual electronic devices on me. I'm speaking as a general.
So.
So you not want me to have my EMT pager on me?
No.
That's just what you said.
You, sir, are.
Said not for personal use.
No, your medical use.
Well, but he was, he was referring to people doing personal business on county paid time.
But he's an EMT person. On call.
But surfing.
Do you do personal business on that?
Here to the public. He's meaning like personal phone calls to boyfriends, girlfriends, spouses, whatever.
I said personal business is what I said. Don't do personal business on county equipment.
But you said I could only have one device.
No, I didn't say that.
That's what I heard.
No, well, you can come up here and read the thing. That's, there's no one device in there.
Well, I think for emergency stuff, if, if, well, you, it's common sense. What we're talking about, Jim, is so people don't get on the internet and surfing on eBay or on Amazon buying stuff while they're at work, stuff like that. You know, the, things like that. And that, you know, it's, that, that's what we're talking about, I think, more than anything.
I think it might be appropriate for the commission to request browser history from the computers and just really see what's going on so we can get a good idea of what's happening. I also have complaints of people reading library books during work hours, um, you know, at their desks while people are coming in from the public. So obviously there's a lot of downtime going on.
The county handbook says that all emails that are sent in into the county, whether it be on personal computer or county computer, are the property of the county. Every email that comes into this courthouse belongs to the county. It doesn't say if I love you, mama. It's the county's and we are authorized to read that and in fact encouraged to do it. And we're encouraged to discipline people for using county equipment for personal affairs. Says so in the book. Just read the book. That's all we want. Do what it says. It ain't hard.
Any other statements from the public about anything? Guys are awful quiet tonight.
I'm glad you had this meeting tonight.
We, we burned you out with all of our.
Well, it got pretty, it's pretty long.
With all of our accounting, of all our resolutions of accounting, we burned you guys out, didn't we?
But I had other things to take care of this morning still, but in my situation, well, it worked out good.
Daryl, you got something?
Yeah, you know, you're saying that I don't disagree with you, Jim, about never bucking the boss. I've worked for some, some guys that in the oilfield that they wanted an opinion. They wanted you to buck them some to see if you had a better idea.
The county handbook accounts for that and I in no way intended to imply that you couldn't.
I, I kinda took the implication that no, you're supposed to, if they said to go jump in the river, you're supposed, I don't go off that kind of.
The county handbook, and you should study up on that, gives you plenty of guidance for the, uh, they don't use the term whistleblower, but that's what you had in mind as a whistleblower operation.
No, I just had, you never followed the boss all the time. I, I I was chewed on several times by a boss, but at the end of it, he said, you know, you got a better idea than I do. So sometimes an employee can't have a really good idea.
Yeah, and that's, we agree with that and that's covered in the handbook. We specifically talk about that because we want full communication up and down, all the way around to make this thing work. And that's, we don't ask any more than just do your job. And if your job tells the boss that, that, boss, I got a better idea, you gotta tell him. That's your job.
Being the person that has to enforce some of the regulations the commissioners passed, it's really hard. We have some departments that adhere to the regulations and other departments that choose not to. And I struggle with that because.
It's not your job strategically, though. You can always tell them, go talk to the commission. If I were you, I would just say stop right there. That's not my, I have no authority over this. Go talk to the commissioners.
But that's not true because when you're acting HR, you are supposed to handle all the complaints like that and the complaints usually come interdepartmentally.
I just.
So that's, you really need to address the HR issue.
Yeah, we gotta help Dawn with the H, HR issue because she's overloaded with doing two jobs and, or five jobs, really.
We're working on, we're working.
Yeah, we're working on it. We're pursuing it. Anyone, anybody got anything else? Not, we'll get out of here.
When are we gonna hear from John Grace next?
John Grace? Well, what happened, if you, you've heard when he was here at our meeting, wasn't you, that, uh, we, we were making this proposal. We were gonna have our county attorney draw up, uh, what was it? A bid, a request for proposal, I think, right Alexis? You do better, you know better than I do Alexis. What were we gonna do with that?
We gave the county attorney sixty days to formulate a request for proposal. After that, the people who respond to the request for proposal will have thirty days to turn in their information to us based on what we send out, which is, which are basically our statistics about our venture so that they can see whether or not they're interested and kinda make a counter offer. We're not gonna put numbers in our request. They are going to kind of talk to us about what they would offer to do if they were to purchase and then operate or just purchase and then re-lease. So we signed an additional six months with John Grace. That way, if there is a transfer of property, he could potentially be the new tenant to the new owner, or I should say the, the residual tenant to the new owner for that amount of time until they work something out. Otherwise, if someone wants to purchase it, they may, they may actually need to negotiate with him about buying out his license. So that company, whoever may own the building in the future, if they want to also operate the business, they may be negotiating with him on a private level that has nothing to do with the county.
When is that time?
Um, so it would be all of December and January, I believe, is what the county attorney is utilizing for time to put that information together. So then we were hoping through the month of February, we would get some responses and maybe by March, we could be talking to some different companies who are interested in purchasing. So that gives April, May and June, July, I, August, September. I think it went through November with the additional six months. So John Grace is basically the tenant until November of twenty twenty.
And also part of the stipulation on that, on that request for proposal was that they had to operate that as a nursing home. They can't just buy it, shut it down and turn it into an office complex or something. It has to operate as a nursing home. We are still gonna offer to, as part of this deal, to give them some of this subsidy we've been given for maintenance and repair thing to keep it stable for a three-year period.
At one time we thought May was a term.
Well, the May was, that's when Grace's lease would end in May. But we, we voted months or so ago to extend that now to November, but also we're planning for this request for proposal to sell this facility. And, uh, but with, with that option, though, they have to run it as a nursing home. Yeah, Daryl.
Did you set a dollar amount on that for each year? I mean, how much can they spend?
We didn't put any.
Well, we didn't really do that dollar amount. We, we, well, we have up to, this next year, we have up to a hundred thousand. We budgeted. Now, we budgeted a hundred twenty thousand. This year, we spent approximately eighty summer. So, so we haven't spent what we all budgeted. Now, next year, we budgeted a hundred thousand. Now, that doesn't mean, I don't know if we will every year after that.
There are other issues involved, past rent and stuff like that.
Yeah.
A lot of deep deals we worked on.
I understand that, but still, you, the way you kinda stated that, you left it open that the money was, that nobody said anything about I want a half million this year.
No, no.
But you never, the way you stated.
No, I know what you're saying, no. Yeah, well, yeah, I see. Yeah, we, I know what you're saying. Well, we, this year, next year, two thousand twenty is.
So you have kind of got to talk.
Well, we got a hundred, well, we've already budgeted a hundred thousand for, for that.
Well, first of all, it's limited to physical repairs.
Yeah.
So it couldn't just be operating expense. It would be limited to physical repairs. And then it would be limited to whatever we have in our budget. So right now, we set it to a hundred thousand even, didn't we?
So you did cap it.
Yeah, well, for this year, but next year, this budget for next year will budget to twenty twenty, twenty-one. Yeah.
You're, you're gonna cap it every year so that you know where your cap is.
Right, probably around this hundred thousand, yeah. Yeah, Sharon.
Did you, did you guys put a, a minimum on what you're gonna sell this for? I mean, do you have to have a certain price out of the
No, it's open for bids.
Nursing home? So if somebody bid a dollar, they could get it for a dollar?
If he's a successful bidder.
We, we have the right of refusal and we do not have to accept bids, but we are putting it up for bid.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not gonna give it away.
What, what's the figure on that? When, when you say you won't give it away, where you're, you need to make a bottom dollar thought of where you're.
Yeah.
That's where the RFP comes in, is the whole point.
Yeah, and also we've, some people think we're just gonna set it up to sell to Mr. Grace. That's not necessarily true. We've had some other, uh, individuals I've been hearing that are interested also besides him. So it is, so I think there'll be a bidding process there going on, hopefully. But yeah, we haven't really set a value. They talked some numbers, but we haven't said anything.
The, the reason I said that here, you know, when you, if you're buying a piece of land or something, somebody says or it's not an absolute option, they say, well, they, no, they're not gonna sell it because they want it this much. Well, why don't you just start off and say, well, we need this much to start with, otherwise don't even bid.
I think what we need to do is get an appraisal.
That's not a bad idea, but you know, you need to have a bottom someplace where it's solid.
That's a good point. We haven't really done that yet. We're kinda waiting on the RSP with Jennifer writing that up, but then I think we're gonna go into the. But then I think we're gonna go into the appraisal part and all that and maybe have a minimum bid value. That's a good point.
Well, well, if somebody comes in and bids, then you just say, well, that ain't enough.
Right.
I got somebody else bid more. I, that, any more or less, I don't like that. Set it so you know.
Well, that's like some things at an auction. If they don't get their minimum price, they won't sell it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said about a piece of land. So you can't, if you don't know where in the hell you're going, it's hard to get there.
So is, is there a reason that you don't just sell it? Like a lot of this stuff gets sold out on the courthouse steps? And the highest bidder gets it? If you have a closed bid
That's an absolute option.
That's like a tax sale there, sheriff's sale. That, what you're talking about on the courthouse steps.
But I mean, if you're gonna have sealed bids, if you, if you gave, had it auctioned off, they can keep raising it where if you do sealed bids, you're stuck there. The next person can't raise it again because you've already accepted that bid.
Yeah. Well, you got good points, sir. We haven't really got into it that far yet.
There is some negotiating to do with numbers. We, we do need to talk about that. And we were afraid to put anything out there initially because we don't want people pre-calculating what they think they can get as a maximum out of the commission.
That's something that we need to discuss when we give our county attorney during the request for proposal about all those issues you just brought up. That's good, good information. Anything else? Alexis, you got anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Gableman?
We adjourn.
Okay. You have a motion to adjourn. I second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.